But I do remember we received legal counsel from our attorney at that time, I believe his name was Paul Garns, that we could approve the minutes with the commissioners that were actually present. So if that still stands, and I'm not seeing our counsel weigh in to indicate any differently, the motion passes to approve the minutes of October 25th, 2023. On our public hearing agenda this evening, the first three cases specifically CUP 23043, CUP 23053, and CUP 23057, concern requests for a conditional use permit for a recreational vehicle as a permanent residence. The first case I mentioned, CUP 230043 is for an indefinite continuance for that use. All three of these cases have staff approval for the requests and are similar to others we've previously considered. The next three cases specifically CUP 23058, 23060, and 23063 are all CUP requests for wireless telecommunications facilities. All three of these cases have previously been approved and are only on the agenda because the CUPs expired prior to being renewed. All three of these cases have staff approval. I will first ask if any commissioner wants to discuss any of these cases, or rather approve them together with one motion. I will then reach out to the public. I will ask any commissioner at this time who wishes to discuss any of these agenda items to please raise their hand. Seeing, okay Commissioner Ruggles? Commissioner Ruggles, I see your hand, but you're muted.
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you. With the cell tower cases, I just want to make sure that the, we are not adhering to the old five-year length of term for those cases. I believe that typically now we approve these CUPs for, with no term involved with them. Is that the case? I know I read through them all, but that was something I missed.
Okay, that is a great question to have on the record, Commissioner Ruggles. Mr. McNeely, I would like to ask you to address that, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Great question. Yes, these are recommended without an expiration. And for cell towers, per the zoning ordinance, if they, if they are no longer in use, then they are required to be dismantled, removed, and the, and then the CUP expires within six months of cease of use.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Beyond that, do you have any issue with approving all six of these together in one motion of the cases that I mentioned?
No, I certainly don't.
Okay, all right. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so I will now accept a motion in a second to approve these, all six of those cases with one motion, please.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Wilson. I move that we approve CUP 23043, CUP 23053, 20, CUP 23057, 23058, 23060, and 23063 as recommended with the staff conditions.
You know what, Commissioner Best, if you would please hold on one second, I have been out of order here. I asked the commissioners if they would like to, if they had an issue, but I didn't reach out to the public. And I would like to do that at this time to see if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this evening. Commissioner Ruggles, I do see your hand raised.
Yes, I question whether or not we can approve CUP 23-043 when a, an indefinite continuance is requested.
And on that one, I can answer that question. What we are approving is not the CUP. The request before this commission tonight is the request for the continuance, for the indefinite continuance. That's what we're approving.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet. Okay, so I'm going to ask, um, okay, Commissioner Ruggles, your hand is still up. Did you have anything further?
No, I don't at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on any of these six cases this evening to please raise your hand. Seeing none, um, we have the motion on the table, and now I'm going to look for a second, please.
I will second the motion that is on the table.
Okay, thank you. I've got a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of the aforementioned CUPs. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is Chair Ontiveris, and I also vote aye. The motion, motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda tonight for staff presentation is case number AM 23001.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeely with staff, and I will be presenting this item. Can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation that is shared?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, this item is the public hearing for the proposed dark sky lighting ordinance amendment that we brought to you in a study session a couple of months ago. So specifically within our zoning ordinance, these are amendments to lighting section 4.3. These amendments were directly, were really directed by, by the joint land use study that many of you will remember from a few years ago. The joint land use study, of course, was a partnership between the city, the county, the Naval Observatory, and Camp Navajo, Arizona Army National Guard. We also had a lot of assistance from a work group of local stakeholders who developed this ordinance. They started developing this ordinance amendment back in 2019, so it's, it's had quite a bit of work in it. The city of Flagstaff recently adopted their version of this ordinance, which, which completely mirrors the ordinance in front of you this evening with exception of a couple of items that, that apply specifically to a, to a much more urban city than an unincorporated county. Other recommendations that came out of the joint land use study to, in addition to this ordinance amendment, was to create a shared lighting specialist between the city and the county. And as we've, as we've briefed you before, this position is created, it is filled. It was previously occupied by, by Mark Stento, who's with us this evening, if you have any, any technical questions. So it really makes all the sense in the world to have, to have a, a mirror ordinance, dark sky ordinance between the city and county with this shared lighting position and, and to really benefit the community with, with consistent lighting standards between the two. So the major changes proposed in this ordinance amendment is reducing three lighting zones to two by eliminating zone three. Of course, zone one is within 2.5 miles of, of the observatories in the county. That would be the Lowell Observatory, the Naval Observatory, Roden Freighter, and the Discovery Observatory. Zone two is everything beyond that 2.5 miles, and then zone three, which is proposed to be eliminated with this ordinance update, would be everything beyond seven miles. When we look at the map of the existing lighting zones, here you see the smallest circle is that 2.5 miles surrounding each of the four observatories. That's, that's a pretty small radius, 2.5 miles. So there's actually very little development in the county that falls within, that will fall within the lighting zone one. And then the rest of the balance of the county will fall into lighting zone two with this ordinance update. Other major changes to the ordinance is a change in the preferred lighting source. Our old ordinance recommends a LPS low pressure sodium. That is now an absolute obsolete technology. You can't even get replacement bulbs for a low pressure sodium. And the recommended technology now is narrow spectrum amber LED. And the ordinance gets very detailed in exactly what the wavelength is for that narrow spectrum. So these are the proposed updated shielding standards, straight out of the code. This chart, full shielding of outdoor lighting will be required in zone one. Partial shielding will be allowed in certain circumstances in zone two. As you see on the draft chart here, out of the draft ordinance, we only have a lighting zone one and a lighting zone two we're referring to. And here's some examples of a full shielded fixture on the left. You don't see the bulb at all protruding below the shield, and then a partial shielded fixture on the right. So there is a maximum lumen output change from, from the two ordinances, from the old ordinance to the proposed new ordinance. In the upper left-hand corner is the old lumen limit chart, and in the lower right-hand corner, you see the updated chart with zone three removed, and it is, it is more restrictive in the lumens per acre allowed. Outdoor lighting permits will still be required, as, as they currently are under the old code, for building projects with the exception of single-family residences. So all commercial institutional building projects do require an outdoor lighting permit for their outdoor lighting. Single-family homes are required to be within the lighting code limits, within the lumen caps. We typically don't have a problem with single-family residences, given the, the amount of lumens that residences are permitted. And we are working to train our building inspectors so that they can help people on project sites, ensuring they comply. Of course, like everything under the zoning ordinance, a property owner retains legal non-conforming or grandfathered rights with older developments built under the old code that were legally permitted when, when they were built. A, any 25% increase in use in number of dwellings or in parking spaces does require, or actually parking lighting does require full, full conformance with the updated ordinance. And a, a 25% increase or more of lumens post 1999 permitted outdoor lighting does require conformance. And of course, all new outdoor lighting in commercial development will require a permit demonstrating it complies with this dark sky ordinance. We took this item to the board supervisors for a work session in August. They were very supportive of updating the ordinance and having it mirror the city code. They do appreciate the Dark Sky Coalition and the work group input that created this, what they saw as a balanced and effective ordinance. And they were supportive of some continued public engagement and public input on this process. So following the direction from the board supervisors, we, we got some help from County Public Affairs to do a series of press release statements, and we posted the ordinance at our website for comments for over a month. We received five total comments. Three were very supportive, and in fact, really were asking for increased enforcement. One did express some, some concern with the, the light trespass requirement limiting their property enjoyment. So that was one. And then we, one, we always get one of these anytime you open something up to the public on, on your website. One was, was pretty interesting and a bit humorous in that it linked this ordinance and LED lights in general to some health concerns and some broader conspiracies. So with that, staff's recommendation, when we look at findings required by the zoning ordinance or a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, are actually the same findings as, as a zone change that comes before you on a regular basis. Staff can make these findings and recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval for AM 2301 to the board supervisors. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Commissioner Best, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at page 97. Looks like the bottom of the page, yeah. And I see a list of the observatories, which are all the center of a 2.5 mile radius, but I don't see the observatory on Observatory Mesa. Is that because it, 2.5 miles is all City of Flagstaff?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Best. That, that's because, yeah, 2.5 mile radius from, from Lowell would, would all be within the city.
Thank you very much. That answers my question.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thanks. I understand changes as the technologies have required updates to this ordinance, but the drops in lumens while also tightening the spectrum of the light has a little bit of a concern for me. I'm wondering, does this change and, and resulting drop in lumens completely satisfy the observatories? Or would the observatories prefer zero? And, you know, are we, are we just gradually stepping down a path here where instead of dark skies, we're just going to be a dark city?
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, Madam Chair. You know, the, the Dark Sky Coalition has, has been a longstanding group within the community, tied to the observatories and tied to the community. And they had a specific work group to develop these standards. So the, these have been a long time coming, you know, as many of us know. LPS lights have, have not been an available technology in, in a long time. So this, this really had a lot of community buy-in. It was, it was a long process to develop these updates. The city has, has implemented it for months now. And obviously, the city has, has significantly more commercial development at, at much higher density and intensity than what we experience in the county. And they, they are not experiencing any problems or issues with the ordinance. So that was one of the benefits of the city passing this first, to try it on for size and see if, see if there were any negative impacts. But really, I believe the Dark Sky Coalition and the work group that created this ordinance took in consideration, you know, the balance of, of what a community needs for safety, security, and, and the preservation of the dark skies, not only for the work of the observatories, but also because the, the community really does embrace dark skies and enjoys benefit of dark skies. So to answer your question, I believe, I believe it is, is the right balance, and I believe with this update, I doubt we will see any, any increases in technology. I, I wouldn't anticipate in minimum of 10 years. Could be quite, quite a while after that. And, and I think when you get to ASHTO standards, other standards, say just for, for roads and traffic in general, you're still going to be some, you know, consideration for safety and security. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Wilson?
To some degree. Then I've got a couple of questions relating to the specifics in the document on page 98. And I don't know if you can pull the document out from your screen or not. But it's single-family and duplex developments, including accessory structures, and it's the lumen limits per lot. Motion sensing outdoor fixtures is zero. And motion sensing outdoor fixtures are a common, common form of, you know, improving security around your home. And this ordinance will prohibit the use of those anywhere in zone one. Is, is that really what we want?
So, great, great question, Commissioner Wilson. And I apologize, we didn't, we didn't hit that more direct because I know this came up in your study session. The zone one, and, and I know Mark Stento is with us, so Mark, feel free to chime in if I get any of this wrong, or you want to add a little better, a little better explanation. But zone one does not prohibit motion sensing light, motion sensor lighting. It just does not give additional lumens beyond, beyond the existing lumen cap in zone one. Your motion sense, motion sensor lighting in zone one still has to fall within that cap. You don't get additional lumens for motion sensing, unlike, unlike zone two. And again, zone one is incredibly small. There's probably a very little bit of development near the Naval Observatory in the east side of Flag, or excuse me, west side of Flag, that is actually impacted by, by zone one. So very, very few property owners will, will actually be under zone one. Mark, I saw you rose your hand, so please chime in with any, any comments you can add to that.
Maybe, maybe I could clarify my question. It, it appears to me that you're allowed 1,500 total lumens. Zero of those can come from a motion sensing outdoor fixture, the way I read the table on, on page 10, or 98.
You know, for this, for, for the record here, I believe that Commissioner Wilson is referring to table 4.3.8. Am I correct with?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, go ahead. Um, go, please go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
So, so am I misunderstanding this table? Is 1,500 not the maximum allowed? And none of those can come from a motion sensor outdoor light?
So Commissioner Wilson, this is Jess McNeely, the staff again, and we'll let, we'll let Mark Stento offer comments as well. So 1,500 is your cap, and any of that 50, up to 1,500 can come from a motion sensing light. You're just capped at 1,500. You don't get additional beyond that 1,500 with a motion sensing light. So within your 1,500 lumen cap in zone one, that can, within that cap, that can include motion sensing lights. Mark, do you have anything you could, you could add to that? Mark, I see you're unmuted, so go ahead if you're, if you're able. And I'm, and I'm sharing the, the table in the lower right-hand corner of the screen here.
So just then, understanding the way you're reading this table, if I were lighting zone two, I'm allowed a maximum of 5,000. But I could add another 2,000 of partially shielded fixtures. I could add another 2,000 of motion sensors and another 1,500 of lights not attached to my building or canopy. Is that what you're saying?
That's, that is my understanding of it, yes. Yeah, and I
So 5,000 wouldn't be the max. It would be 10,500?
That would be my understanding, yes, is that, is that, that's, that's additive in those columns.
Yeah, Mr.
Which is why
Yeah, this is Chair Ontiveris. Yeah, we're going to need clarification on this because I understand Commissioner Wilson's question. And the way I'm reading it, I'm understanding it the same way that he is. So if we could have Mark Stento address this, I think, excuse me, I think that would be helpful for clarification. Exactly what Commissioner Wilson just pointed out, that we have a combined total in lighting zone one of 15, combined total in lighting zone two of, of 5,000. But in zone two, you can continue to add for a total of 10,500. But it does look like the outdoor motion sensor has been excluded in lighting zone one. So, Mr. Stento, if you could offer an explanation or clarification on that, that would be very helpful.
He just said his mic isn't working.
Would he text an answer?
Yep, he text, he just, he just texted.
Okay. Footnotes are
Sounds like he
screenshot.
He's saying that there are footnotes that are not showing on the slide, and they clarify the mix-up.
Yeah, the footnote number two says, "Motion sensing outdoor light fixtures shall have an automated timer set to turn off the fixture at a time no greater than five minutes after the light has been turned on", which doesn't address the lumen issue. It just says they've got to turn off automatically after five minutes. Maybe we could move on. I've got another couple of questions and let Mr. Stento work on getting his mic working.
Yes, and as Mr. Stento did suggest, he may try calling in. Either option would be good. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Wilson, why don't you go ahead if you have other questions?
Okay, starting on page 104, paragraph 4.3. F, prohibited lighting. It says, "Any lighting device located on the exterior of a building or in the inside of a window which is visible beyond the boundaries or lot of a parcel with intermittent fading, flashing, rotating, or strobe light illumination." That sounds like a television to me. So it would sound to me like if you can see someone's television through their window, or if they chose to mount a television on their patio, that would be prohibited. Am I reading that correctly?
So, Commissioner Wilson, I believe that's, that's that, let's see, any lighting device located on the exterior of a building, inside a window. I don't believe that's the intent, and I don't think, and again, City of Flagstaff hasn't had any problems in a much, in a much more dense environment. So, and of course, this, this was an expert work group who developed these. I don't believe that, that enforcement issues have had anything, had any problems with televisions. I believe this is really directed towards signs, like, you, you know, we often see in commercial areas of larger cities.
So then I could also then
Flashing, blinking, rotating, or strobe illumination. I don't believe, this, this does not specifically call out screens in there. So I, I don't think, again, I don't think this is, has been a problem, and I, and I don't anticipate that it, that it will be a problem.
Okay.
I think, I think there's a lot of effort to apply common sense and just good neighborliness to, to all of this.
And, you know, one of the things I've seen is art installations and things that have a series of video projectors projecting images on walls, exteriors of sometimes large buildings as big as the, the White House, for instance. And I wonder if that's addressed in this, because that would be another unique kind of circumstance. But moving on to the following paragraph, 43G exceptions, number two B. And it says, "Movable lights such as spotlights attached to infrared sensitive cameras must be mounted such that lights cannot be directed higher than 20 degrees below the horizontal measured from the center of the light beam." So below the horizontal doesn't seem to make sense to me. You would think, you wouldn't want it aimed above the horizontal. Regardless, everybody's Ring doorbell already does that. So it would sound to me as if the infrared lighting in Ring doorbells are, is being prohibited by this. Is that the intent? And I shouldn't say ring, infrared doorbells.
Yeah. Mark, do you have an answer on, on that one, on 43G exceptions, item B, if that's intended to prohibit people's doorbells?
Well, I'm sure it's not intended to. But I, I wonder if it's written too broadly, and, and then as a result, it's capturing, I mean, in theory, someone could file a complaint and say, "My neighbor's Ring doorbell is spying on me, and I, I want it shut off." And they could cite this particular part of the light code, lighting code. And I think it would be difficult to argue against it. I know I'm waddling pretty deeply here.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think this is intended Yeah, yeah, I, I think this is intended not, not to what's a typical residential use. Um, I think this is, this is, uh, and again, um, y- you know, we, we don't have as much commercial development in the county. A lot of, a lot of nonissues, um, uh, but, um, yeah, I don't believe that, um, this is intended to, nor, nor would it be impacted. Nor, nor would it impact what's pretty common residential use.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Wilson, this is Jay, can you hear me?
Uh, Mr. Stento, try that again, do a sound check with us again.
This is Mark, uh, sound check, can you?
Yep.
Okay, I can hear you, yes, please go ahead, and Commissioner Wilson, let's have all your questions addressed.
Okay, I'll do my best, um, I'm not the author of this, although I was certainly involved. Um, regarding the, uh, the infrared illumination, that's simply an effort to treat that like shielding from other fixtures as well. Uh, I understand what you're saying, from an enforcement standpoint, there's a practicality, uh, component as well. We are not going to go and force someone to, uh, take down their Ring Doorbell because it has a forward-facing infrared light. The design, uh, what we see now too frequently on Amazon, I can get on and I can purchase a relatively high-output infrared illumination device and I can shine it into the sky. The intent is not specifically to go out, nor would we, and try and enforce against something like a Ring Doorbell. My interpretation of the intent is that it gives us some ability to address emerging technology, which is additional illumination, area illumination in the infrared spectrum. Uh, to, to, again, to reiterate, we would not pursue a code enforcement case, nor would this, the city against a Ring Doorbell. Does that clarify some much?
It, it, it does, um, it's saying, I understand the law could be, but because we're gonna choose not to, it won't be. W- which just doesn't seem to me to be the, the best way to write rules and laws, but o- okay, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, um.
Well, let me, let me clarify further with.
No, that's okay, I, I, I recognize I'm pretty far in the weeds with this and I don't wanna take everyone's time. It, it just seemed to me, um, not as well-written as it mi- it might have been able to be. Could, could we go back though to the, uh, Table four point three Alpha? Um, and discuss the motion sensing outdoor light fixtures?
Yes, so when we're reading it, we're reading combined maximum for fully and partially shielded fixtures and fixtures not mounted to a building or canopy, which are, so that is not including fixtures mounted, uh, not mounted to a building or canopy excluding motion sensing outdoor lighting fixtures. So the way that was written, motion sensing lighting outdoor fixtures are excluded. So that two thousand lumens for Zone Two is excluded from the combined maximum for fully and partially shielded fixtures. What that means is there are two thousand additional lumens provided in Zone Two for fully shielded motion sensing fixtures. Does that make sense?
For Zone Two, but what does it mean in Zone One?
In Zone One, it means you are not provided any additional lumen, uh, specific to motion sensitive fixtures. You are only allowed the flat fifteen hundred, however, as long as shielding requirements are met, that fifteen hundred lumens can come from any source, including a motion sensitive fixture.
Combined maximum for fully or partially shielded fixtures and fixtures.
Excluding motion sensing outdoor light fixtures, they are excluded from those totals. Um, that's why there is a separate, separate lumen allotment for each. Now there, the partially shielded fixtures maximum is not excluded. Partially shielded fixtures maximum is included in those totals. So, uh, you may not have any partially shielded lumens in lighting Zone One. You may have two thousand partially shielded lumens in lighting Zone Two of the fifteen hundred and the five thousand you are allotted respectively.
So I could have as many fully shielded motion sensor lights in Zone One as I wanted, as long as they were fully shielded?
Within lumen caps, of course, and, and Zone One.
And just for reference, fifteen hundred lumens is, is, you know, it's a kind of a number, but what, what is a typical hundred watt light bulb?
Um, well, we're, we're, and I understand we're not dealing with wattages anymore.
I, I understand, but just for reference as a common, you know, something we're familiar with.
Uh, your average consumer light bulb that you're going to get to replace, and this is the intent, I believe, of what you're asking, the average consumer light bulb, uh, to replace a sixty, eighty, hundred watt bulb that you would have found traditionally, is going to be anywhere from four hundred to eight hundred lumens. That's going to depend on the spectral output of the light.
I got him.
Uh, a, a wide variety of factors. So you're roughly looking at three light fixtures. Now, it's important when we look at the lighting Zone One requirements, we understand the, the, the physical geography of Zone One. Zone One encompasses not just, uh, Kokino County, but a substantial portion of the City of Flagstaff. Um, the residential zones encompassed in Zone One, um, uh, at least the most populous Zone One. The, the, the three observatories that are not Naval Observatory Flagstaff Station have very minimal populations around them, um, very, very, very few properties. So we're really focusing on, on NOFs. In NOFs, part of that is county and part of it is city. Um, one of the reasons why we don't want to be incongruous with the city in our lighting Zone One restrictions is your neighbor across the street, uh, is going to be in the same zone as you, but they might be within the city limits. And we believe it's important, both for the sake of enforcement and for the sake of making sense to the public, uh, that the standard is the same for you as for your neighbor, even though you're in the same zone. Second, uh, lighting Zone One is made up heavily of Timber Sky. Timber Sky has its own separate, uh, lighting standards above and beyond the city's lighting restrictions. Those were put into place, uh, because the current lighting's code, what we're reviewing now and the city's currently implemented code, were not in effect when Timber Sky was, uh, being planned.
Right.
So it had restrictions above and beyond, uh, the city's ordinance, um, that are already in effect. So really, the applicable area insofar as residential properties goes is Flagstaff Ranch. Uh, Flagstaff Ranch, um, uh, is a relatively rural area, uh, that is generally speaking fairly dark and kept that way. We respond to very few calls in it. Um, and generally speaking, we've not had any pushback from either the HOA, which is Peaks, that seems to manage that, um, or the residents, uh, in the area. Um, the majority of the impact is going to be on the commercial properties that are in lighting Zone One, um, near the Dark Sky Drive area over there.
Okay.
So hopefully that clarified. My pleasure. Any other questions, sir? Hello?
Sorry about that, my, this is Chair Antiveris. Commissioner Wilson, I want to be sure that you feel all of your questions have been answered.
I, I do, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, um, Director Christelman, I saw your hand up, would you like to address this?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening, this is Jay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, so, um, I just want, I think we've moved on, but I, I wanted to provide a little context and hopefully some, some closure for Commissioner Wilson's concern. So the lighting code is, uh, much more specific to items that would otherwise require a lighting permit. You know, Ring Doorbells and, you know, um, the flat-screen TVs and handheld flashlights that, that you can, you know, illuminate the sky with, those don't require lighting permits. So they essentially would be unenforceable through the ordinance, I, I hope that helps provide some context.
It does, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Director Christelman, that does help. Um, Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, um. How does trespass apply to partially shielded fixtures? Uh, it seems like you could have direct, a direct view of a light source in a bulb from a partially shielded fixture. And my understanding of trespass is that's what we're trying to avoid. So that's my question, how, can you have light trespass with a partially shielded fixture?
Um, I'm going to ask either Mr. Stento or Mr. McNeely or Director Christelman to address that question.
This is Jess McNeely with staff. Um, Mark, if, if you, if you want to give an explanation, I, I think that'd be great, but, but I believe trespass means that, that, uh, you have lighting trespass across the property line. So just because you can see a partially exposed bulb, um, doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that, that trespass is taking place. So Mark, is there any other, um, explanation that you could potentially give on the concept of trespass and partial shielding?
Certainly, um, trespass is, is somewhat nebulous in the sense that, that it, it lacks a specific definition in the ordinance. And while certainly, uh, it's, it's enforceable in extreme examples, uh, it's, it's really relying, um, in order to, to truly enforce it on, on an illuminance measurement. To, to determine, uh, if an illuminance measurement constitutes trespass, uh, is, is a very challenging thing, at least insofar as, you know, uh, telling someone they're gonna have to turn off their lights. So that's the, most residential issues are truly dealt with through the shielding requirements in the ordinance. I want to be very clear about that, and I was gonna mention that to, uh, Commissioner Wilson as well, um, when we were discussing the, uh, infrared component, uh, in that there is a similarity to light trespass in that, uh, i- i- it, by the very nature of the physics of light, um, we, we have to implement some form of regulation, but some of the things in there are really only going to be truly enforceable in extreme circumstances. We're on the forefront of, of, of this type of, of regulation, of, 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 um, i- in any way, um, uh, managing the light, uh, like, like the City of Flagstaff does. Uh, there is no standard for us to refer to when we're reviewing light trespass. Is it, um, is it one lux, is it ten, you know, the ambiance, moon is an impact as well. So, so without going too far into the weeds, which I'm already doing, um, to more concisely answer your question, uh, Commissioner Best, um, it, it would be circumstantial, it would have to be a pretty bad unshielded or partially shielded light, to, to actually result in measurable trespass, but it would be depend on the property line. You know, maybe it's a manufactured home park and one residence is a mere feet from the others. Um, and, you know, that partially shielded light is resulting in significant interior illumination that can be measured in an adjacent home, maybe it's a one-acre property, um, and there's just faint hints of that light. It's case-by-case basis, best addressed through shielding practices.
Well, that, uh, leaves me a little uncomfortable, um. You know, I, my philosophy is that any law should be consistent with culture and values. And the culture and values that I'm looking for here is that we embrace dark skies and we embrace the use of light everywhere in a way that, respects other properties and, and respects, uh, the telescopes around town. So to have light trespass not defined is a little confusing. I, I would like, uh, as, as we do these sort of developments, for people to all agree that from my property, I shouldn't look at your property and have to squint. Maybe that's the, I know that's a little bit of a rough definition, but, uh, as I've said before, I have neighbors who have exposed bulbs. I hope over time, everybody kind of gets it, that, that's not, um, courteous, just the way, uh, you know, you don't leave a trashy mess in your front yard. So to have, uh, light trespass not defined is confusing. To, to me, it's just if I can see the source, if I can s- actually see the bulb, uh, that's light trespass. If it's, if I can't see it and it's going down or against the building, that to me is appropriate lighting.
And Commissioner Best, to clarify further, uh, unfortunately, the, uh, in, in actual, a partial shielding situation per the definition, um, you would not be able to see the bulb. Uh, if you could see an exposed, uh, illumination device, and then we say bulb, but in reality, these are diodes that are illuminating these days. If we can see the source of the illumination, um, then we likely have a shielding issue. Um, speaking from someone who has knocked on many doors, um, and dealt with this in public, the vast majority of trespass situations, or the situations you're describing, where there is a substantive impact, um, in terms of, um, uh, ruining the night sky on adjacent properties, uh, the vast majority of cases are shielding issues and we can't address through shielding. Um, even if we can't, we have informational tools to provide, but there are types of bulbs that we can provide folks with or resources to. There are many ways to deal with that. The problem is, is, uh, and, you know, I, I, I don't mean to imply that we would not be able to take a measurement if we were to go out and investigate light trespass. And I say we, but it most likely be Janus at this point. I, I don't mean to imply that we cannot take a measurement and say, "Oh, two lux from across the street, that's incredible, that's, that's extremely bright, we're gonna, we're gonna use that." We would be able to use that. But if we're able to, if we go out and we take a measurement, or someone goes out and they take a measurement and it's marginally above ambient levels at a bright moon, but the, the subjective impact on the affected homeowner is significant, which occurs in many cases, um, that's a situation that is going to be difficult to follow up on from an enforcement standpoint. Um, and ambient light levels do vary. So realistically, if we were to put a number on it, rather than handling it subjectively and circumstantially, that threshold would probably be pretty high. Higher than a, a, a very bright moon at night. And you could imagine that some lighting would still probably affect neighboring properties on a dark night, even if it were not much more brighter than the moon, if it were not shielded properly. Hence our ability to, or typical, or we typically address it through shielding.
Well, I, as with Commissioner Wilson, I, uh, we don't want to spend too much time on this. A common sense definition to me is, uh, if someone's standing on their property is a, a, an adult above five feet tall can see a bulb, that is light trespass. And that would make sense to most people. So I, I would encourage you to think about that and I'll, I'll let it go from there, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best, um, Commissioner Wilson, I see your hand raised.
Because I always enjoy agreeing with Commissioner Best, um, I too am surprised and a little concerned to hear that light trespass is not defined, and I would encourage that in the inevitable next revision of this ordinance, that, that, uh, they endeavor to, to define that specifically. Um, and I think it's especially important because, um, an awful lot of this discussion seems to assume that Flagstaff is flat and that we are looking, you know, straight horizontally, um, at our neighbors. Whereas in, in reality, oftentimes, we're looking up a hill at something. And so even a shielded light, um, could have a fully visible illumination source, um, if you were, you know, twenty degrees down a hill from it. So in the future, I would hope that they wouldn't, um, endeavor to define trespass a little bit better, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Um, are there, I'm looking to see if any other hands are raised by the Commissioners. Uh, yes, Commissioner Tohe, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners and staff. Um, I think it's really important for our, our people in the community to understand what, what these ordinances are about. And for me, it's always to err on speaking layman's terms, um, and making it really simple. And if we're not understanding some things at our level, I think it would be much more confusing for the public. So I think that it's just really important to make sure that we're thinking about community people. And in some cases, some, you know, some of our relatives are not, um, you know, they don't, um, they may not have. education to the, you know, maybe some of them didn't graduate high school, maybe some of them, but they're still homeowners. And so I think that it's really important to think about it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tohe. I just want to ask you if you are thinking about something specific in what is in front of us this evening?
Are you asking me?
Yes, I am. I appreciate and I understand what you're saying. And I was just wondering if your comments are being generated from something that you see in the ordinance that is kind of causing you angst that you'd like to bring attention to, that you feel the language could be simplified? Or was it just a general comment that you made?
Yeah, it's a general comment, especially on the different points that we're, that has been brought up tonight.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, I do not see any other hands raised. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I think the questions were good. I think they were relevant and I think that they were ones that needed asked, and I'm glad that they were so that they are on the record for this case this evening. Mr. Stento, I do want to thank you for being with us and offering the explanation that you did. That did help a lot. With that, I'm going to ask if there is anyone, I believe that there are no further questions from commissioners. So I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public this evening that would like to address the commission on this case? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I am not seeing any, so I'm going to close it to the public comment portion and open it up at discussion, or excuse me, at commission level. Commissioner Ruggles, would you please start our discussion this evening?
Okay, thank you very much for allowing me to start off with this. I have one comment from Mr. McNeely. The process of revising and updating the ordinance actually started in 2013. I participated in that along with many other people from the community at the time to get it going. Same thing with Lowell Observatory. And the same thing with the Navy. They made many trips over in the years between 2013 and 2019 to meet with various parts of the community and discuss this. The Jalous Study, I have to say, was the culmination of this effort. And everyone who participated in that is to be commended. I'm only one of many people who were involved in this process. Second thing is, I think what we have been presented here is an excellent ordinance update. I want to thank, let's see, Mr. Stento and Mr. McNeely for answering the questions. I think they have addressed those questions very, very adequately. I couldn't agree more with the answers that they have given as a result of my participation in and part of this process to get here. At this point, I feel that the update should go forward with no changes and a recommendation for acceptance of this as it is written to the Board of Supervisors. And at that point, I'll turn it over to everyone else.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Tohe?
Yes.
Any discussion or comments that you would like to add while we're in commission discussion?
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to echo Commissioner Tohe's comments about the ordinance, while it was drafted by, I'm sure, a group of very expert people. Those of us that are not experts, probably, you know, having to ask the questions that we're asking tonight and even then getting answers that, I can't say I still fully understand exactly what's going on here. So in the future, when they make updates to this, I would encourage, as we mentioned earlier, a definition for light trespass and an ordinance that can be understood by someone who's not a lighting expert. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just one more thing that makes me be proud to live in Flagstaff in Coquenino County. It is really a great ordinance. And not to say there aren't some tweaks to be made. I think I've said before that I go to Santa Fe a lot to see my grandkids. And when you come over the hill and you see Albuquerque spread before you, it's usually at night when we get there. And then you come over the next hill and you see Santa Fe and you just say to yourself, these people are missing out on something wonderful, those New Mexico skies. I'm sure there are lots of people in Albuquerque who have never seen a star, lots of kids. So I think we're doing a great thing here. I'm sure we'll tweak it as time goes on and make it better. I would say that I hope that we are doing good PR around this. I hope that we are trying to get everybody in Flagstaff in Coquenino County as proud of this as they should be. You know, this is something that I'm sure other cities around the country, around the world are using. And I'm very pleased to be a part of it. Thank you. And I can accept it as is, definitely, at this point.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Vice Chair Burton?
I think all my fellow commissioners have already expressed any of my thoughts, so I really don't have anything additional to add.
Alrighty, thank you. And Commissioner Walsh? Commissioner Walsh, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I see that you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
How's that?
Ah, there you are. I can hear you now. Please go ahead.
New computer. Sorry. I agree with the questions that were brought up for clarification. I am very pleased that we have a lighting ordinance. I look forward to it being made more perfect as time goes on. I have nothing to change or question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walsh. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. And I can say that every comment that has been put out this evening and every question that has been raised, I'm fully supportive of all of those. So I appreciate, I'm going to sum it up and say that I appreciate the questions, the answers and the comments from my fellow commissioners. And I cannot add anything at this point. So I believe that we are ready to move forward with the motion because I am on board for getting this approved as well. So with that, I will, in a second.
I would like to be the person who makes a motion for approval or of a recommendation on this to the Board of Supervisors.
All right, I think that would be appropriate, Commissioner Ruggles. So is that a motion?
Yes, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. For one reason or the other. Okay, anyway, I'm ready to go forward with a motion for a recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors then. I would like to make a motion that case AM-23-001, as it is in its current form before us, be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for adoption.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to need a second?
I'll second that.
I second that.
Okay, I heard Commissioner Best in there first. So I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles to move this to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval, specifically case AM-23001, and a second by Commissioner Best. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras. The motion passes unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is case number CUP 23059.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeely with staff. And we've, Kelly Bingham from our staff will be presenting this case. I will point out one thing, appreciate the, the commission's motion and discussion. The MIS grant, follow up to the dark sky ordinance, the MIS grant that was recently followed through on with deliverables, we have a link at our website, did give us some funding to create some flyers. So that is available at our website. We have physical copies here with us. So those are available to all of our staff when useful. I would encourage you to look at that. And so that, what we're hearing and we certainly hear it loud and clear that this needs to be understandable to the layperson to understand how to be in conformance with this ordinance, that's what that flyer is for. So we do have that available and would encourage you to look at that. But thanks for indulging us with that follow up. And this case, CUP 2359, Kelly Bingham from our staff will present. So go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, you know what, could I just interject? And I did have a comment from a fellow commissioner asking Deborah Guthrie to please turn off her camera? All right, thank you. Okay, now let's go ahead and move forward with the presentation for the next case, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Chair Aunt Taveras. This is CUP 2359. This is a request for your CUP for campground. The property owner is Griffin Land Holdings. The applicant is REI Coop in Washington. Their representative is Jay Parks, based in Scottsdale, Arizona. The property location is on North Alta Via Road, access via Woodland Ranch, about six miles northeast of the valley intersection of Highway 180 and Highway 64. Parcel size is about 20 acres, it's 19.95, and it's in the G general zone. And this request is for a 10-unit campground. Here's a vicinity map showing the nearby properties. And I've also highlighted their access so that you can see how the property will be accessed by all of the guests. So they're going to come in off of Highway 64 onto Woodland Ranch Road. They're going to go past the mobile home park you see to the north. And then they're going to turn south onto Alta Via Road to access the property itself. And this is just a little bit north of South Rim Ranch Road, for context. Here's an aerial photo of the property. You can see on the left-hand side of the screen, Alta Via Road running north to south. And then you can also see some trees on the right side of the screen. The property is gently sloped towards Alta Via Road. So the applicant's proposal is that most of the tents would be in these trees over here on the right side of the screen, just the east side of the property. The applicant has proposed 10 tents on platforms. They would also, oh, sorry about that. They would also like to have a communal fire pit and an outdoor picnic area. They're proposing three communal restrooms and showers that would be supported by a septic tank and a leach field. They're also proposing a water storage tank with a booster pump station. They'll have a dumpster and trash enclosure and a driveway with parking for two vehicles, which I'll talk about in a little bit. They're also proposing a storage shed and a propane tank. The applicant proposes to operate from April to October, not to exceed 180 days as required by our building ordinance. The groups are composed of up to 12 guests, two guides and a camp host. And they've indicated that the group size would be no more than 15 people at any point. They would have quiet hours starting at eight or nine, or, I'm sorry, nine or 10 p.m. daily so that they would not disturb other properties nearby. And most of the day, there wouldn't be any campers on site because they would be having guided hiking tours in various areas around the campground. For example, going to the Grand Canyon. So for most of the day, the campground would be empty and noise would be minimal, not to exceed 50 decibels at the property line. This request is a little bit unique from our other campgrounds in that they're proposing that campers will be brought directly from the airport to the site in a passenger van. So therefore, there would only be one vehicle bringing all of the campers all at the same time. There would also be one vehicle to bring employees as well. Water would be delivered and trash would be picked up weekly. Our engineering division did briefly review the traffic and drainage and indicated that it was viable. And the wastewater concept will be approved via typical septic permit, just like anyone else would get if they wanted to put in a septic system for a house. The fire and emergency service plan would be provided to High Country Fire and Rescue. The applicant has been working with them and will continue to do so to get a plan approved. To discuss that in a little bit more detail, the applicant will be improving the road as typically required for campgrounds in the G-zone. They also propose to keep water near the fire pit, just in case. And camp employees will be on site at all times. As I mentioned before, everyone is coming to the campsite at the same time altogether. And Chief Trotter at High Country Fire and Rescue will be approving their emergency services plan. This request is a little bit atypical for our campgrounds, the requesting a parking waiver. They are proposing only two parking spaces because they don't need any more than two vehicles on site. Typically, one space per campsite would be required for a total of 10 parking spaces on the site. However, staff is supporting their request for only two parking spaces, so long as the shuttle model continues to operate in that way. We believe that it would minimize the site disturbance and just makes sense to do it that way, so long as the shuttles are operating. A landscaping waiver has also been requested to retain all of the existing trees, except for those required to be removed in order to operate and build the tents as designed. No signage has been proposed and very minimal lighting has been proposed. A lighting permit would be required should they choose to put in additional lighting. Here's an overview of the site plan. You can see that they access via Alta Via Road over here on the west side of the property. And they're going to drive all the way back towards the east side of the property. You can see that all of the tents are relatively close to the property line, but they do need the setback of 50 feet. Just to zoom in on this a little bit, you can see that there is some storage, trailer parking, gravel pad areas for operation. There's also a garbage enclosure, a little bit more to the west, near where the passenger vans would be parked. They've also indicated where the septic field would be. And then all the way over on the east is where the campsites would be spread out in between the trees. And to the south in the corner of the screen over here is where the fire ring would be. To give some illustrations of what's proposed, I put together a couple of slides that are mostly pictures. So you can see, this is a bathroom proposal. It would be basically a park model RV that would be hooked up to the septic system and it would have solar panels on top. And that would be how the shower and bathroom facilities would work at the site. You can also see the tent proposal. Any tents? Any tents would need to be approved through our building division. But you can see that the color is a natural earth tone color, as typically required. And you can see that the tents are proposed to be spread out through the junipine, or, I'm sorry, the juniper trees here. And here's another overview of the bathroom. You can see how it's laid out a little bit. This is a typical park model that they've retrofitted so that bathrooms would be viable on the site. They're also proposing a little tent in case of inclement weather, likely to be stored in the storage shed when not in use. There's a water storage tank here and a natural earth tone color. And you can see inside the tents, everything is very temporary and movable for when they need to take down the tents after 180 days each year. You can see some picnic benches proposed here and some basic outdoor grill equipment. The applicant would need to get health permits in order to serve food and as required for campgrounds in the first place. So, they will be working closely with the health department on those approvals. You can see the fire pit proposed in the bottom-left here. It's raised up off of the ground in a metal container. So, it does seem to be a little bit more safe, but again, this will be approved by Chief Trotter. And finally, you can see the gravel pass proposed. Neighbors within a half-mile of this property were notified and invited to a neighborhood meeting. Meeting was held via Microsoft Teams, and only one attendee came, but had no concerns. Staff has not received any comments on this project. Other than the waivers that I've already discussed, everything complies with the zoning ordinance. The density is very low. The minimum parcel size has been met. They're also conforming with their setbacks, and no RVs have been requested. And I believe everything else we've discussed on previous slides, but I'm happy to go in more detail in a few minutes. This site is not within the boundaries of the valley area plan, but it does seem consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and policies. Many of these were included in the staff report, but I'm happy to go in more depth should the commissioners want to discuss. Here are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. Staff has been able to make all of the findings for this proposal. It's very low-density. I thought I had one more slide in there, but I don't. But overall, this seems to be a very low-density, well-thought-out project, and staff does make the findings and does support their request. Staff recommends approval of CUP 2359 with the recommended conditions. And are there any questions from the commission?
Okay, Commissioner Best, your hand was up first. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We normally would put a wildlife-friendly fence all the way around campgrounds. That's what we traditionally do. There is a condition here about boundaries. Did you have some discussion with the applicant that they have a different kind of a boundary in mind? Because we are within 50 feet or so of private property, and we definitely want to keep folks from going into the private property. Why wouldn't we just put a wildlife-friendly fence all the way around as we traditionally do?
Thank you, Commissioner Best. This was something that we discussed very briefly with the applicants at the pre-application meeting. I would encourage them to speak to that when it's their turn. However, I'll address it to the best of my abilities now. Something that staff has been encouraging lately is that if the applicant does not want to put in fencing, it's best for the wildlife if there's no fence at all. And as long as there's signage preventing people from wandering onto nearby properties, typically, we believe that that would meet the intent of the zoning ordinance. And again, as we discussed before, most of the day, people will not be on the site anyway. They'll be out at the Grand Canyon or otherwise, and the group will be together for most of the activities, from my understanding.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the applicant about that. Also, did you talk to the applicant about having adequate storage? We've run into situations before with these types of projects. That's a lot of tents to stick in a shed, and sometimes we end up with added sheds. Did you talk about that with the applicant?
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Best. That was actually not discussed in detail. We noted that there was a storage shed proposed. We saw it on the site plan. And they're only proposing 10 tents, and they seem to be something that REI sells, relatively lightweight. I believe that what they've proposed may be adequate, and if it's not, that's something that staff has been able to approve administratively because it does support the use of the campground. So long as it's in earth-tone colors and not within the setbacks, that's something that staff is able to do if they need it later on.
Okay, and a question about the parking waiver. When we get the comments, I'll talk more about that. I think probably a couple more parking spaces is reasonable, but would the waiver automatically run with this current owner and the proposed use? Or should we put that as a condition? Because if, if this property were sold as a campground to someone who is using it differently and a little more traditionally, how would we catch that? Because obviously, then you would need lots more parking if, if it was just a normal campground. So, should we put something like a waiver should, should apply only to the current owner and the proposed use? Or would that automatically come up?
Thank you, Commissioner Best. I believe that that is in the conditions. I can close out of the presentation and pull up the staff report to verify. But I believe we wrote it up exactly like that in the conditions, that as long as they're using this property as proposed, they can only have two parking spaces, as opposed to 10, that would be typically required. I will also say that annual inspections are required as part of the building permit process, just to ensure that tents are taken down and put in back up correctly every year as required. And at that time, we would know if ownership has changed and be able to discuss with them.
Hey, Kelly, this is Jess with, with staff, and this will help Commissioner Best's question. Condition number three, as proposed, states, "A waiver is approved to allow two parking spaces rather than one space per campsite as meeting the parking requirements outlined in Section 4.1 of the zoning ordinance, so long as visitors do not drive in personal vehicles." So, the waiver then would go away if, if the shuttling system was no longer continued.
Okay. Okay, well, we can talk about that when we get to comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best, and I would like to point out that condition number 19. This is regarding the fencing question, Commissioner Best. It says, "The applicant shall delineate property boundaries to prevent visitors from trespassing on neighboring properties." So, I, I'm going to go ahead and just kind of throw that out to the applicant at this time that we would like to know how that delineation is going to take place. So, with that, I'm going to, let's go to Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bingham, I'm curious on condition number four. It says, "The building division shall approve the erection of tents each year prior to occupancy and the dismantling of tents at the end of the camping season." So, that means two staff visits a year to check on the condition of tents. And I, I don't know that, I, I have the utmost respect for building division, but I don't know that they're experts in tent erection or removal. And I wonder what's the, what's the nexus behind this requirement?
Kelly, this is, this is Jess with staff. I can help with this. So, actually, Commissioner Wilson, our building official, Adam Hicks, preferred to, to check on these once a year, well, twice a year, once, once for the, you know, for setting the tents up and once for taking them down. And that's, that was really, really his preference and, and felt that was, that was the right way to, to manage the, you know, the life, health, safety of, of, of these commercial operations. So, that, that was initiated by, by the, by the building official himself. So, and it's, it has been working for him so well so far. And he has found that's really the best way for, for the building division to manage the things under their purview on these campground sites. So, I hope that helps.
So, we're already doing that, two site visits a year to verify tents are properly set up, and, and they are no longer there in other locations?
Correct. In addition, not, and not just the tents. So, yeah, the tents are required to be fire-rated. They can't exceed a certain size, a certain square footage unless they are wind-engineered. So, there's several things that go along with that that the building division is always checking on. And then there are the other improvements on, on the site that they're ensuring are meeting, are meeting their requirements. And, and that has been working for them.
Okay. Let's see, condition number 11 says, is talking, addresses lighting. And since we just had a lengthy conversation about that, I'd rather not spend a lot more time doing it. But why don't we just say, "We'll be in compliance with the lighting ordinance"? It seems like we're, we're specifying things specifically in a condition here that shouldn't really be included here. And all, all it should say is, they should be in compliance with all of our ordinances, lighting, environmental, otherwise. And, and I know that we had a retreat that discussed how much detail we need to put into these conditions. So, I'm curious to know why some of these seem to still be here.
So, Commissioner Best, probably on, this is Jess with staff. When people have proposed, given in their, their submittals, their cyclone, their narrative, their submittal materials, what they propose, what, what we're asking here is that they stay consistent with what they proposed as, as approved. And otherwise, they are required to, to get a permit as well. We do strive, as we discussed at that, at the retreat, that if, if there are going to be conditions placed on a conditional use permit that are redundant to something that is otherwise required by a code or regulation, that we call out that code or regulation within our condition. So, there's full understanding. It's not the CUP that's requiring it. There, there is a separate code or condition that's requiring it. Often, it does help with code enforcement to go ahead and tie it to a conditional, yeah, conditional use condition. So, then there's a tie to the zoning ordinance if that, if that requirement is coming from a separate ordinance. So, I hope that helps.
Okay. It, it seems like we could have condition number one, must comply with all other ordinances, see 12345, and, and not have to have all of these other things. And especially when we're specifying things like Shelby narrow-spectrum filtered or phosphor-converted amber LED or fully-shielded. That's way more detail than we should be including in this. It's, let's rely on the ordinances as they stand and not try to, you know, duplicate that effort here, would just be my thought. Moving on to item number 14, it says, "There shall be no sale of food or other goods on the property." It would seem to me, most campgrounds I've been to have some type of a small camp store kind of a thing for necessities. Why have we prohibited that in this case?
I can speak to that briefly, Commissioner Wilson. That's a typical condition that we have in there because this is at the G-zone and not in a commercial zone, as we would typically see for campgrounds. Often, these are in residential areas. This is intended to cut down on any potential traffic from outside the campground, stopping in to just pick something up on the way to the Grand Canyon. So, because they're providing meals for free or included as part of the camping experience, it didn't make sense to change that condition in order to allow sale, whereas we typically don't in the G-zone in any other case.
Okay. Moving on to condition number 17, "A dust mitigation plan shall be submitted for two vehicles a week on a gravel drive?"
Commissioner Wilson, I can answer that. Again, this is a typical condition, and typically, what staff requires is very minimal, maybe even just a paragraph explaining how they'll keep dust down. We haven't found this to be a burden so far.
What would be an acceptable plan? I mean, are they going to have to water their gravel driveway?
You know, I believe that Mr. McNeely and Mr. Short have accepted these in the past. Perhaps they can speak to that in a little more detail than I can.
This is Jess with staff, and I, and Bob, feel free to jump in. Often, if, depending on the material they use for their improved driveways, the material they use, if it's a, if it's dust-mitigating, like compacted AB, tends to be much more dust-mitigating than, than other materials. So, it's a combination of what materials they are using, how often they are, how often they are accessing the site. And it, therefore, if, if dust mitigation is required or not. Again, these are, so there's, you know, there's certainly, we've been reactive to, you know, meeting commission expectations with these, with these conditions in the past. So, we're, you know, trying to cover all the bases, so to speak. And this is, this is a common one. It could be easily met. And as you point out, theirs will be very easy to meet in that they've only got two vehicles coming. But, you know, we're not sure on other service vehicles. They'll have to come up with the numbers of how often the site's going to be visited and if they need to do a water truck or not. Bob, I don't know if you had anything to add on what you've, what you've seen in previous presentations?
That's, that's a complete enough answer. I, I just seem, it just seems like we're making things overly difficult in, in situations where we really don't need to do that. You know, on one hand, with lighting, we're saying, you know, it says that, but we're not really going to enforce it because we're going to trust people do the, the right things, and, and we're going to try to work with people. And, and here, we're saying, "For two vehicles a week, you got to have a dust mitigation plan." There seems to be. Moving on to item number 20, "The applicant shall consult with nearby public land managers." Do we know who those are? What, what is the, what is the distance at which they need to expand that scope?
Commissioner Wilson?
Oh, go ahead.
Sure. That's a great question. This has been kind of on a case-by-case basis. There's a little bit of state land nearby, and because they're going to be going to the Grand Canyon, we would accept that as well. I don't know if Mr. McNeely or Mr. Short had something in mind specifically for this case, but my understanding is that those two are perhaps the ones that we would typically require. And this is not intended to be a large burden. That's just to reach out, let them know that they're going to be in operation, and see if there's anything that they need to do in order to mitigate impacts.
So, my understanding is the Grand Canyon gets about 5 million visitors a year. These 12 tents, I, I can't imagine having too big of an impact. So, what, what is it we would ask them to, to coordinate with respect to the impact of 12 additional tents worth of people?
Sure. To be honest, all that we would ask is that they let them know that they're beginning operation. If Mr. McNeely would like to speak to that, that would be helpful. I'm not sure exactly who we would require in this scenario. That's just my guess.
Yeah, so I'm sharing my screen now to show, so we, we look at the proximity of these things. This is, this, we do have some campgrounds, some campgrounds that have been approved that are completely surrounded by national forests. So, then you'd expect the national forest. So, we have state lands, and we do have a bit of, of national forest land. So, I think this comes down to what the, what this applicant's, you know, proposed operational model is on, are they taking people to, to national forest lands or not in addition to Grand Canyon National Park, and what are their plans? In the case of tour guides, they're required to be permitted if you're on national forest land by the national forest, if you're, if you're going to the national parks by the national parks. So, that, in, in, in this case, being that this campground operator has their own tour guides, having that tour guide certification, whatever parameters, the tour- has their own tour guides, having that tour guide certification, whatever parameters the tour guide is, is working with, with the national parks, that's probably going to suffice certainly for the national parks. And then if they intend on having their campers access these public lands around them, then that, those would be the public lands they would need to coordinate with. So I think it's a, it's a as needed basis and probably pretty minimal in this case. And this, this is a much more controlled proposal than, than many of the campgrounds we get.
So it's a condition that's really not accomplishing anything. That's just my opinion. I'm sorry. I'm not asking for an answer there. Okay, the applicant, moving on to number 21, that we're going to provide them with leave no trace materials. I'm pretty familiar with REI as an organization. And if there's an organization that could probably write the book on outdoor ethics, it might be REI. And, and the folks that participate with them. Is that, is that really going to be beneficial in this scenario?
We, we found, and this is one of the things we did address in the, in, in the retreat is with these campgrounds that do have some proximity to, to public lands. It's very simple for the applicants in, in their materials. When they have usually a bulletin board, and most of these campgrounds will have a bulletin board, that they, they're going to post these, they're going to post what's the, what's the fire status on, on, can you have, can you have open fires or not? They're going to post the leave no trace standards and they're going to post these other things that, that we've, that we've kind of evolved here over time of things that campgrounds might need if they're in any proximity to public lands, or if the people using those campgrounds are going to be, are going to be visiting the public lands. It's been really easy for us to check this. And they show us they posted these materials on a, on a bulletin board. Honestly, for those of us who have been to similar campgrounds or, you know, these are the kinds of things that you see on trailhead, trailhead bulletin boards or other campground bulletin board. So it's, it's been very easy to meet these requirements. And it hasn't been a burden on, on campground operators.
Well, it, it would also be easy to meet the requirement of posting something that showed them where the nearest indoor shooting range was, so they wouldn't shoot out in the national forest. But it, whether it's easy to do or not is, is, is not really my question. It's, is it, is it appropriate for us in our planning and zoning world here? And as commissioners to impose conditions on a CUP that, that have very questionable results for those conditions. And, you know, it, it's not, how difficult is it for you guys to ensure they're doing it? It, what matters to me much more is what is the, the benefit of doing that? And again, in this particular case, I question that. And, and the same questions apply to conditions 22 and, and 23. I, I won't go into detail there and I, I apologize to everyone who's probably getting really tired of me doing this, but it, it just seems absurd that we're putting all these conditions in here to me. Question, item number 24 says there's going to be no off highway vehicles allowed except for fire suppression and maintenance vehicles. Why?
That's, so Commissioner Wilson, that, that's become a norm that, that OHV, the recreational use of, of OHVs on these sites, you know, using the site for recreational OHV driving is, is something that's, that's, that hasn't been allowed on these, on these campgrounds. That's been a standard condition.
That's not what this says though. It says there shall be no, it doesn't say no recreational use of off highway vehicles. Off highway vehicles can be licensed for on highway use and drive in straight off the street completely legally. Where is the authority that we have to say that an otherwise Arizona DOT approved motor vehicle can't drive off of a public street onto this property?
Good question. I think a tweak to how that's written it to, to be specific. Yeah, I know we've run into this before. And again, that's so great recommendations and look forward to the commissioners working out what their expectations are. And, and we as staff, we are here to help. We are here to help the applicants. We're here to help the community. We're here to help you guys. And that, and that's, and that's what we tell people and that's what we do. So, yeah, that's a good recommendation on how we could tweak 24 to be specific that there's no recreational use of OHVs. We all know that anyone can legally drive anywhere, you know, use that as their transportation if, if that's what they're using as their transportation.
And then finally on number 26, it says signage shall be installed to alert campers to the fire danger consistent with the national forest. I'm guessing they're going to come up highway 64 to get to this site. There are two or three, as I recall, fire danger signs along that road. Those aren't sufficient and one more at the campground is going to somehow change something?
I'm, I'm led to believe. Good topic for the commissioners to work out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And while we're continuing on here on number 24, why don't you come up with some proposed verbiage? So when we get to commission discussion, we've got something to start with.
I will try to do that.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Best, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, maybe I should wait until comment time. I'd like to basically respond to Commissioner Wilson. I can do it now or I can wait.
You know, why, why don't we wait for commission discussion? Because it sounds like it's going to need to be something the commission's going to need to discuss and make decisions on. So hold it till then. Thanks, Commissioner Best and Commissioner Toki.
Thank you again. I just wanted to get clarification on the tents revisiting the tents again. Is that something that's already written as, as a, something that's final? The only reason why I'm asking is because I don't want to have something change later. Maybe trying out these tents. Oh, it doesn't work or it's not. It's not bringing in as much customers as we would like or things like that. And, and the reason why I also I'm saying this is because we do live in northern, excuse me, in Arizona and northern Arizona where we have tribal communities and indigenous communities that sometimes it's kind of, I don't know, quote unquote, popular to, to set up TPs or things that are not culturally vetted by, you know, with changes. So anyway, I just wanted to just put that out there and just kind of let's see if the tent situation is something that's final. Thank you.
So to answer your question, Commissioner Togi, the, the applicant is required to, to develop in substantial conformance with, with what has been approved. And that includes the, there are some middle materials with the tents you saw. So, yeah, we, we completely understand concern and, and, and we've, we've run into this previously with, with use of culturally inappropriate structures. So yeah, TPs would not, would not be permitted. It has to be some form of tent in substantial conformance, you know, quite similar to what they've, what they've submitted. And we haven't had a problem with this with the other, with the other campgrounds that have been approved.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. This is Chair Antiveris. I do not see any other commissioners' hands raised. So I'm going to ask if the applicant would like to address the commission on the case this evening. Please state your name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask you if you have received the staff report, if you've read it and if you agree with the conditions therein. With that, you're up applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair Commissioners. This is Josh Clipping, representing REI. Referring to property 4133 North Alta Villa Road in Williams, Arizona. Yes, we have received the staff report and we do not have any objections to the conditions as written in the report.
Okay. And I would like to ask you, the question was brought up by Commissioner Best. Let me pull this up regarding the fencing. And in here, it just, that is condition number 18, if fencing is modified or additional fencing added. Then it goes on to, in condition 19, the applicant shall delineate property boundaries. How do you intend to delineate the property boundaries without a fence?
Yes, it is in our intent and desire to not add any fence. To be compliant and, you know, have as minimal impact as possible. That's our intent with developing this site. It's also what we heard during our pre-application meeting as being least impactful on the wildlife is actually no fence. So we're happy to do so. We would delineate property mainly through guide oversight. Guides do accompany the guests at all times while on the property. So this is typically can be handled in a welcome note. As soon as guests arrive on site, they're greeted by a camp host who gives them a camp orientation, including our property boundaries is an easy conversation that we can have with guests. Guests are also not permitted to wander away from camp by their own. We tend to stick together either in their personal tents or in our communal areas around the fire pit or eating areas. If it's advised that we need to provide signage, we're happy to comply with that as well and, and come up, work with the staff and develop and submit for a sign that could be strategically placed around the property that would inform guests that they're approaching the boundary.
So, okay, thank you. And I'm, I'm certainly not, my question was not advocating for fencing. I just wanted to be sure that that question was answered for the commissioner that asked. And I believe that you have done that. So thank you very much. I'm going to ask if the, any commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand. Okay, Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised again.
Sorry, I'm a little late. I'd like to ask the applicant if it is his intention to store the tents on site and if so, has he got enough storage space to do that? Because we've run into this before where suddenly there, there are new sheds popping up because just don't have room to put them away in the winter.
Yes, happy to address Commissioner Best. We operate a number of these camps across the country and have a very good understanding of exactly the amount and volume of space required to store all of the camp's contents during the off season.
That's all I need to hear. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Best. All right. I am not seeing any hands raised. Now Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised. Did you have further questions? No. Okay. I don't see any hands raised either by commissioners. I did reach out to the public. I do not see any hands raised from the public. So I'm going to close it at public and open it at commission level. Commissioner Ruggles, would you please begin?
Okay, thank you. I was in the process of looking at some of the conditions. At this point, one thing I would like to, well, answer a question about the lighting and the lighting detail. One of the reasons for that is that in a number of cases with extremely low level lighting, such as, is typically proposed for a campsite or campground like this, that the requirement for narrow spectrum amber lighting cannot be met. It simply is not commercially available. So there is, this is a way of dealing with the ability to request or require amber lighting that is a different type than the narrow spectrum amber that we see commercially available that has much higher light outputs than what are being requested for applications like this. I hope that answers the question. On that, as far as everything else goes, I am pretty much in alignment with Commissioner Best on the requirements for this. I don't see any reason to change much of anything other than perhaps refine the wording dealing with OHV use on the property. And we've got to remember this is private property also. So whether it's licensed, whether it's insured, regardless, it is up to the owner of the property to be able to determine what is used on the property. That is a private property, right? So I'm going to leave it at that. I want to hear what the rest of the commission has to say about this particular CUP before I have anything more to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Togi?
I, I agree as far as the, the proposal for this camp. I don't think, I support it anyway. And so I, I think there's, you know, it's always, I'm just always on the side of getting to know nature and just being reverent about it and, and just taking that in. And, and I'm hopeful that our visitors will take it that way too. And I appreciate REI for, for proposing this. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Togi. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You asked me to maybe draft a couple of change proposals here. The first one I would suggest is, is condition number 17 with regard to the dust management. To me, that seems, in, in, especially in this case with two vehicles and, and a water truck and a, and a, I said, you know, dump truck, garbage truck a week, that's less than most households. And, and I think that's probably unnecessary in this case. So that would be my first proposal. The second proposal would be that item number 20 for the offsite coordination, if we're going to require that, then we should specify who that is and, and what that coordination should look like. Because as ambiguous as item 20 is right now, practically anything could be said to either comply or not comply. And if we're going, if it's, if it's important enough to make it a condition, it needs to be a condition that can be clearly understood and clearly complied with. And I don't believe item 20 does either of those things right now. Items number 21, 22, and 23, I believe, and Commissioner Best's concern about the boundaries could all be addressed by simply saying that there should be a, a public or that the applicant shall post publicly the information that's contained in those items, along with a map of the premise and its boundaries. If we combined all those into, okay, you should have a bulletin board and it should have these four items on it. The leave no trace, the forest and grassland ecology maps, the map with the boundaries and I think there was one other one in there too. Then it makes a little bit more sense. It makes it really clear what we, what our expectations are of them. And it doesn't turn into somebody handing everybody a booklet of, of information every time they show up that ends up just getting thrown away as they leave. And finally, I would suggest rewarding item number 24 to read, the use of off highway vehicles for recreational purposes is prohibited. I don't know that we can actually say that because of, as was, as Commissioner Ruggles stated earlier, this is private property and, and, you know, I don't know what rights we have to control what they do on their private property, but it would improve what's currently written. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. While we're on the topic of condition number 24, Mr. McNeely, I would like to ask, because Mr. Excuse me, Commissioner Ruggles brought up a good point. This is private property. brought up a good point. This is private property. So do we really have any right or authority to be telling the applicant on this off-highway vehicle situation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's a good question. So outdoor recreation entertainment, if the purpose of this site was to pay a fee to come drive your, you know, your OHV, that's a land use regulated by our zoning ordinance, and that's not what's been requested. So that is a use that can be regulated. We also list OHV or dirt bike or any off-road vehicle tracks from being created in the G-zone on a private property. If you create a track and use it as a track for entertainment, then that is a use listed in the zoning ordinance. It's a separate use that can be regulated.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Wilson, can you please read your verbiage for number twenty-four again, so the rest of the commissioners can look at that? And actually, Commissioner, Mr. McNeely, would it be possible, because I know that I've seen you guys, yeah, can you please type in what Commissioner Wilson is about to say?
Sure.
"The use of off-highway vehicles for recreational purposes is prohibited."
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and move to Commissioner Best. Commissioner Best, thoughts?
Thank you, ma'am. Forgive me if I get a little philosophical here. Our adventure with campgrounds really started with Happy Jack Lodge. When was that? Five years ago, before COVID, when they tried to do an expansion, and we heard from neighbors, the negative, many negative effects of what was going on there, in particular OHVs, but really a broad range of problems that people had with the neighbors had, and the Forest Service had with the folks who were showing up at Happy Jack Lodge and acting inappropriately. So once COVID hit, we were getting, and pretty much still are, getting a campground a month. And so we developed some of these conditions as an educational tool, trying to, number one, educate our applicants and have them educate the folks who show up. And I support that 100%. That's why I take my time to be a commissioner, is to try to reflect and make real the values in the comprehensive plan. And one of the big values in the comprehensive plan is the preservation of the natural world that really brought us all here mostly. I noticed that the applicant doesn't have any problem with this. And if he wants to speak about this, great. I think this is just, yeah, it is a little wordy. Yeah, it's, some of these are, you wonder how they're going to comply. But turns out, Leave No Trace materials, you know, for thirty-five bucks, you can get a whole string of posters. Somewhere you can get the little fire danger level signs, because we see them hung up in these campgrounds now that we've required them. We hope that this, you know, in this case, so these folks are going to be coming to northern Arizona and shepherded by REI. But they'll be coming back. And hopefully, because of these conditions, they get an education in how to behave in our forests. Does it really make any difference? I always say Sedona. Sedona, to me, is kind of a nightmare. But more and more and more people are going to come to northern Arizona as they have to Sedona. And as you notice in Sedona, I was just down there looking for a camp spot, and it's all closed up, because so many people have arrived and not all of them know how to behave. So that's sort of my philosophy here. Yeah, it's a little wordy. Yeah, maybe we're a little redundant. And maybe we don't exactly know how an applicant is going to come up with how to teach about the ecology. But I would like to put it out there. And that's why I believe that these are useful conditions. I like the change to condition twenty-four, and I support that. I think that two parking spaces is dreaming. If somebody's Uncle Bob comes by and, you know, there's two vans there, then there's no parking space for Uncle Bob. I would at least go to four. Of course, people can park along the road, but when they do that, they are potentially blocking emergency vehicles. So I think just common sense is four, and it's not a big deal. Not a big deal either way, actually. The boundaries, I guess, you know, this is REI, and I think they, I think they support these values. They, you know, they don't have any problem with these conditions. They get it that their folks can't go onto adjacent private property, and I think they'll figure that out. Storage, that was a good answer. And so I'm happy leaving it as it is. I would add two parking spaces, but let's see what other folks have to say. And I would leave the rest of the conditions and change twenty-four as Commissioner Wilson suggests. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Vice Chair Burton?
I think this is a well-thought-out plan, and I really don't have anything further to add.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walsh.
I think this is a well-thought-out plan. I've been a member of REI for forty-something odd years before it moved up to Washington. I like the challenges that were brought up. I like twenty-four being changed to OHVs are prohibited. I love the idea of conditions twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three being posted on a bulletin board for the participants to read. And so there is no generation of trash or recyclables that have to be managed. Recycling facilities are not available over there, so the least waste, the better. I can make the findings. I love it. Thank you.
Chair Antiveras, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
Oh, thank you, Vice Chair Burton. I have said quite a bit, so now I'm going to have to start over. Thank you for that. All right, this is Chair Antiveras, and I have heard all of the comments that have been put out by my fellow commissioners. I personally am okay with leaving condition number three as it is, a waiver is approved to allow parking spaces. The reason that I'm okay with that is because the way that the applicant is planning to run this particular facility, there's purpose in it, and there's not going to be Uncle Bob showing up. I think that that is going to go against really the reason that they have it like they have it. As a matter of fact, the attendees of the camp can't even drive in. So I think that because of that fact, there's not going to be other people driving in. And I like to give applicants, if they're requesting something and it can be done, I have a high degree of what the applicant, or a high degree of respect for what the applicant is asking for. So I would prefer to leave number three as it is. Going to, let me back up here. I remember the retreat that we had where we had the discussion concerning these conditions that are put into the, into the staff report and the recommendation, or, excuse me, the conditions here. I understand what Commissioner Wilson is talking about. Some of them are kind of philosophical in nature without ever really having the ability to show adherence to them. But in the case this evening, when I reached out and asked the applicant if he had read the staff report, and if he was okay with the conditions that it contained, his reply was yes, he was. Now, if the applicant, for example, brought up the issues that Commissioner Wilson had brought up, I would, I would take a deeper dive into it. But if the applicant is okay with this, then I'm going to be okay with it. I also agree with Commissioner Walsh's, okay, hold on, let me back up and just share with my other commissioners at this point, though, that in other future campground applications, if we do have an applicant that questions these, some of the conditions in here, I am going to, as I'm sure all of my other commissioners would, I'm going to listen to them and get their thoughts on how, if they think they should be in there or not. I'm going to leave it at that for now. I do agree with Commissioner Walsh's suggestion on items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. If we're going to have the applicant providing this information, I agree with her that just a bulletin board or one thing, so everyone can look at, everyone's attention can be pointed to it, rather than handing out, you know, twelve separate pamphlets for three separate things, which would be, you know, that's going to be, that's going to be a lot of material that's going to be handed out. I would, I would like to see these also placed on a bulletin board, as Commissioner Walsh suggested. I think it would simplify it. And I support the revision to the wording on condition, condition number twenty-four. So if we could go back, Mr. McNeely, let's go back and, well, you know what, I'm going to go back and ask the other commissioners. Commissioner Ruggles, why don't we start with you? In the discussion that you have heard take place, do you have anything to add or anything that causes you angst here?
Well, the answer is no and no. I agree with your assessment and also Commissioner Walsh's assessment regarding twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. So that being said, if we can work out sufficient wording to deal with that, I can certainly make the findings for approval of this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McNeely, while I'm running through the other commissioners, could you please put into words what we're trying to say on twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, so we can take a look at that, please?
Sure, actually, Kelly Bingham is the one who has the screen shared. So I would understand that the items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, that the applicant shall post those three items.
Right.
On site.
Yeah. And actually, this was a point that Commissioner Wilson made that I agree with, that twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three could all be consolidated into one condition. The applicant should post Leave No Trace, Forest, Grassland Ecology Maps. So if we do want to consolidate that, we could, but I do like posting. So go ahead and get something up, Ms. Bingham, and we'll review that. Commissioner Tohe, any further thoughts?
No, I don't have any further thoughts. I do agree with the changes that are being proposed, and I do agree with you on the fact that if the applicant does not have any issues with it, I think that is good. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Tohe. Commissioner Wilson?
The only thing I would say is, in item number seventeen, if we're going to ask them to coordinate with outside agencies, we need to at least specify who or what that is. In this case, clearly, it's with Grand Canyon National Park. If we're going to ask them to do that, we need to tell them who it is. And I concur with the changes as they're being proposed currently. So, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson, hold on a second. You said condition number seventeen. That was the dust mitigation plan?
Oh, sorry about that.
No, you're fine. I just want to be sure.
Condition number twenty.
Number twenty. Okay. Ms. Bingham, could you also bring clarification to that? So the, so we can look at it? Like, who specifically do we want the applicant to consult with?
Just replace nearby land managers with Grand Canyon National Park.
Okay, can you please make that change, Ms. Bingham? Okay. Anything further, Commissioner Wilson?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Thank you. A couple of things. First would be a question to staff, whether, this is a commercial tour operator. I don't know if we get into this, but I believe a commercial tour on the national forest needs to contact the national forests. Is that not correct? So there's a question. I don't know. I don't know if that's something that we want to get involved with. But it's my impression that if you're running a commercial tour on the forest, you got to have permission. So there's a question. I know that some campgrounds, it's kind of, in a way, it's kind of cool to let them figure it out. But some campgrounds have done things electronically. They have sent, or shall we say digitally, they have sent people materials as part of the check-in process. So we don't want to rule that out. And I know these days, all trails are on your phone. And so let's make sure that we allow for digital resources to be used, as well as, you know, a physical bulletin board. What the bulletin board might do is point you to an app on your phone. I know my son just rode his bike from Flagstaff to Oracle down by Tucson with his phone. So it's all on there. And we should certainly leave that open as an option. And I bet REI knows a whole lot more about this than we do. So if we're writing something, we might invite them into the conversation. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Best. And I will say that nothing that we have put in here in these conditions would prohibit REI from digitally sending stuff, or any of the things that you just mentioned. We have put, there's nothing that would prohibit them from doing that. All right, Vice Chair Burton?
I'm liking the changes that I'm seeing coming across. So I'm totally on board with those. And I'm also of the mind that, you know, as long as the applicant is agreeable, then, you know, if, for example, number three, they propose two spaces, so I agree. But I don't think we need to change that. So I don't think there's anything else that I can add. I'm perfectly happy with the changes that are being made, and I'm happy to support this.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Walsh. Anything you want to add?
No, I didn't comment on the lack of fencing, because I love it. I mean, I know we always have to fence humans in. But no, I'm very happy with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Walsh. And actually, I didn't comment on that either. But I think that my thoughts may, maybe at least I inferred them to the applicant when I was But I think that my thoughts may, maybe at least I inferred them to the applicant when I was asking the question of how the delineation was going to take place. I, I also prefer to have this open, so I'm comfortable with all of that. All right, so I will say that I can make the findings. The applicant is okay with these conditions. Let's go ahead and review, so we all are on the same page here. Let's look at conditions. We're leaving three, I believe the first one that we need to address, I guess, are twenty, excuse me, twenty, twenty, no, twenty, let's look at twenty-first. The applicant shall consult with nearby public land managers concerning offsite impacts, including the state trust, Forest Service, and Grand Canyon National Park. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, I'm going to ask if that satisfies your concern.
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Okay, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, can you scroll up, please? Okay. Okay, so you have combined, keep scrolling, Ms. Bingham. Okay, there you go, stop. Okay, so it says, I'm going to read it into the record. The applicant shall post a bulletin board, central location or digital location materials, including leave no trace, forest and grassland ecology, education, fire danger level consistent with national forest, and maps which show appropriate and inappropriate areas for offsite recreation. So we are, that is going to be, Ms. Bingham, number twenty? Am I right with that? No, excuse me, number twenty-one?
Madam Chair, could, could I suggest that we say and/or digital location materials? And slash or?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. If, if any commissioner has an issue with that, just raise your hand. I, I, I think that's fine. Ms. Bingham, I do want to confirm, though, that three conditions have been put into one? And that that one is now number twenty-one?
Yes, Chair Antiveros, I can confirm that that will now be condition twenty-one. However, I will say that this is conditions twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-six all combined. Twenty-six states that signage shall be installed to alert campers at the fire danger level consistent with the national forest.
Right, okay. So I want this, I want the, the numbering to be correct with this, so I do understand that. So we are going to have condition number twenty-one. And then condition number twenty-two is going to be, there shall be no off, or excuse me, the new verbiage, the use of off-highway vehicles for recreational purposes is prohibited. Then we're going to have number twenty-five. Number twenty-seven is going to become twenty-six? No, that's.
Actually, no, it's twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right, okay, so I think we've got it here.
And, and Madam Chair, if I could comment on item twenty-one?
Please.
I understand that additional resources may be beneficial to share that information, but I, I believe that saying and/or digital location materials kind of defeats the purpose, having, because then you could not have a bulletin board. I think having a bulletin board where everyone, not just the person who may have signed up or who happens to have a cellphone or whatever, can see that information is the most important thing. And, and making it and/or digital materials would eliminate the, the requirement for that bulletin board and, and defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Okay, you're absolutely right, and I support that. And I support it so much that what Commissioner Wilson is saying, that we're going to have to take that back to, Ms. Bingham, can you please take the verbiage back on twenty-one to what it was, removing the and/or? Was, if the bulletin board, uh-huh? Okay, does everyone see condition number twenty-one right now? And if anyone has a problem, raise your hand.
I don't think even, we don't need any ors. I, I think on a bulletin board, a centrally located bulletin board is what we're, what we want here, I believe. And I'm sorry to continue to drag this out, but.
Okay, but no, it's, it's the intent of it. The applicant, what we need to say here is the applicant shall post on a bulletin board in a central location, materials including, and then the rest of it there. That, that satisfies the intent of what we're doing. Okay, the applicant shall post on a bulletin board in a central location. Okay, does anyone have any issue with that, any commissioners? Commissioner Wilson?
No, ma'am, I like it a lot.
Okay, so now we've got number twenty-two. The new twenty-two. The new twenty-three. Scroll up, Ms. Bingham, please. The new twenty-four, and then make the new twenty-five. All righty, okay, I think we have it. So with that, I believe we're headed to a motion, please.
All right, I'll make.
Benham Chair? Oh.
I'll make a motion that we approve CUP twenty-three fifty-nine with the conditions as modified.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Burton. A second by Commissioner Wilson to approve CUP twenty-three zero five-nine with the modified conditions. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Chair, this is Chair Antiveros, I also vote aye, the motion, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is CUP twenty-three zero six-one.
Zach, I think you're, you're muted, Madam Chair. This, this CUP is being managed by Zach. So Zach, if you can unmute, you should be able to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, Chair Antiveros, and Commission. This is case CUP twenty-three zero six-one, the Northland Baptist CUP modification. The applicant for the case is Amy Miller, and property owner is Northland Baptist Church of Flagstaff. Property is located at eight thousand North US Highway eighty-nine in the Doni Park area. And the parcel size of the subject property is four point four seven acres. It is located in the AR two and a half, that's agricultural residential zone, two and a half acre parcel size minimum. This request is for a modification of conditions of an existing CUP that was approved in two thousand twenty-one. That was CUP twenty-one zero four one. Here's a vicinity map, so we're in the Doni Park area, this is Highway eighty-nine. The property is right here on the west side of eighty-nine, across from an activity center at Burris Lane with commercial uses on that side. The property is surrounded by the North Peak subdivision, which is all in the AR two and a half zone also, and so yes, it's in the same zone. Here's an aerial photo of the subject property, and this photo was taken prior to some work that's being conducted. That'll be discussed in some later slides, but here is the church as it existed in two thousand twenty-one. And they use the driveway off of eighty-nine here. That leads to a parking area. There was a playground at the time in this area here, just to the west of the church. And you can see the distance from neighboring residential properties here. Here's a photo of the subject property from Highway eighty-nine. And I want to give you just a little bit of general background. So the church was originally approved through a conditional use permit and a design review overlay in two thousand two, this was a year after the two thousand and one, the first Tony Park area plan that, where the design review overlay was first created for the area. There was a renewal of just the CUP in two thousand eight because there were no modifications requests, requested, and that was approved. There was a request for renewal and modification of the CUP, and this time requiring a DRO for the modifications in two thousand eleven. That was because there was an expansion of the church sanctuary and a remodel for a new church school. And in two thousand twenty-one, the church school was, there was an approval for, in addition to the church school, of three thousand two hundred twenty square feet of additional space for six additional classrooms, as well as a request for three hundred and thirty-six additional square feet for a baptistry that were approved in a CUP and DRO. For some background of this particular request, so one of the conditions from the two thousand twenty-one CUP was that the applicant build a six-foot masonry wall around the playground area in an L shape. And as the applicant began construction of the new classroom addition in two thousand twenty-two, they found that condition, that it was cost, it was cost prohibitive to build that wall. So the applicant's request tonight is to modify condition number three of the two thousand twenty-one CUP to allow movement of the playground further away from residential property and to use a six-foot solid wood fence in lieu of the masonry wall requirement. So this is the site plan of the playground as was approved in two thousand twenty-one. So it was ninety feet away from this property line, about fifty feet maybe from this property line where there's adjacent residential. And the commission required this masonry wall here. The applicant is requesting to move the playground a hundred and ninety feet away from this property line and further even from this other residential property line, so that the playground would be in this area further to the southeast and to replace the masonry wall with instead a six-foot wood fence. And just so you can see the larger context of the area, I drew on this aerial map, the addition, it's almost complete. I think you'll see it in the next slide. And here's where the six-foot solid fence would be located, former playground, of course, in this area, proposed playground here. And this is just so you could see staff's approximation of what this might look like on the ground. For this modification, the applicant did conduct a new citizen participation plan. So they reached out to neighbors within three hundred feet of the property boundary of the subject property and invited them to an open house on the property on October second. And neighbors appeared to be satisfied with the movement of the playground to mitigate noise. Neighbors did bring up concerns about traffic and the timeline for finishing the project. And I've laid out some responses to those concerns here. So staff does agree that the playground movement should mitigate noise and accomplish the needs of the applicant as well as concerns about noise that were previously brought up in two thousand twenty-one. As far as ADOT requirements for traffic, so ADOT has required that there be a traffic impact analysis. And regardless of conditions of a conditional use permit, we work with ADOT, our staff, our engineering department staff, and public works staff to make sure that any ADOT requirements regarding traffic safety are met prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy for the new addition. So the applicant's aware, and they've been working with ADOT to try to meet those requirements. And those requirements will be met prior to the issuance of this certificate of occupancy. And as far as concerns about timeline for finishing the project, the applicant has met the requirement of the zoning ordinance that within, I believe it's two years of being issued the conditional use permit, that they also be issued a building permit. So that the timeline of the project is, is moving forward. And the applicant has noted that the project has had a few delays in completion because they've had trouble finding workers to complete the project.
Mr. Schwartz, are you still there?
Hey Zach, I think we lost you there.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveros, and I agree, I think we've lost Zach.
Yeah, I believe Zach dropped off the areas, he's back on now.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
No problem, we lost you there, so if you can, you're, yeah, if you could reshare, there you go. And just pick up from, from.
We'll be on the slide.
Your last slide. Yes.
Okay, so I believe probably, I'm not sure where I dropped off, and I do apologize, but probably I went over the, let me switch settings here. Probably the concerns that were brought up by the neighboring property owners. And I wanted to mention that the playground movement should mitigate the noise and accomplish the applicant's needs, as well as mitigating, making that mitigation. The ADOT requirements will be met regardless of whether or not they are conditions of a CUP. And so we'll make sure that traffic safety is monitored by ADOT prior to allowing the completion of this addition. And I wanted to note that the applicant did get a building permit issued within the time that is required of the zoning ordinance. And that delays in completion of the project or to, to the applicant having issues finding workers to complete the project. And the applicant might be able to speak a little bit more to that if the commission has questions on it. As far as long-range plan compliance, so there are two long-range plans that apply in this area, the comprehensive plan and the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan. The comprehensive plan has goals and policies regarding preservation of natural quiet and having public and semi-public uses and locations that are convenient to the population being served, as well as being compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. I do have to note, I, I made a mistake in the staff report. I believe I used goals and policies from the old plan. It's been recently updated, so I did want to note that that plan has a whole subsection of the community character element that mentions natural quiet as a high priority. And that also it shows that it has goals and policies that public and semi-public uses should have adequate impact mitigation for surrounding neighborhoods. And staff believes that this request is in line with the long-range plans. Regarding findings of fact for a conditional use permit, there are four that the commission needs to make in order to approve this request. And staff has made an analysis in the staff report regarding these findings. And if there are any questions of the commission, I'm happy to answer them as far as staff's analysis. But with that, if the commission can make the findings of fact, staff recommends approval of case CUP twenty-three zero six-one with the recommended conditions of the staff report. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schwartz, this is Chair Antiveros. I do not see any hands raised by the commissioners. Mr. McNeely, we may have, Mr. Schwartz, can you still hear me?
Madam Chair, I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I can hear you, but your screen's gone.
Oh, I just stopped sharing, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay. Go ahead and put those findings of fact up there, though, so that people in the public can see how this commission forms its decisions. So I would like to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative at this time would like to address the commission. If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I also would like to ask if you have received the staff report and if you agree with the conditions. And with that, go ahead.
Hi, this is Randy Miller. Address one-two-zero-one-five North Gunman, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight-six-zero-zero-four. Yes, we have received the findings, and we do agree that it would be helpful, and we want to be good neighbors, about moving the playground and mitigating the sound. That it would be helpful and we want to be good neighbors, uh, about, uh, moving the playground and mitigating the sound, uh, but it would be helped us and the neighborhood, we believe. In order to move the playground and have a sound, uh, well, not a sound wall, but the, uh, privacy wall or privacy fence. That would enclose the playground.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, you're, you're muted if, uh, if you didn't know.
Yes, I am. Um, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Mr. Schwartz, I would like to ask if you would put up on your screen. The recommendations. The condition recommend, okay, conditions so that those joining us can see what we're looking at as well. I'm going to ask if any commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time. Seeing none, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public, open it at commission discussion. Commissioner Ruggles, would you begin our discussion?
Well, thank you. Uh, and one thing that I do have to disclose at this point is I think this falls under the, uh. Uh, guise of ex parte discussions. Because I have had numerous discussions with the property owner directly to the west and. This is in an effort to, uh, get to the point where we are at right now with this. Um, and an attempt, uh, which has been successful to avoid any kind of action such as a, uh. Complaint about, uh, compliance with the, uh, conditions. As specified originally with this CUP, I think that, um. I was probably one of the people who was responsible for the, uh, the sound wall condition. Uh, costs risen dramatically since the CUP, uh, was, uh, first addressed. Uh, the original CUP, not the modification and that, uh. That property owner to the west has said that this, uh, change should take care of the problems that, uh. He had noted, and I have to agree with him completely. Uh, we've avoided further problems with, uh, enforcement. Um, this is a solution that appears to me to be, uh, one that will correct the problem. Add that, uh, of noise, uh, and comply with the, uh, Donnie Park Area Plan as well. Uh, it is somewhat noisy along, uh, eighty-nine where they are. Um, and the, uh, contribution to overall noise level with the change in the location. Uh, should be, uh, relatively small, and if it satisfies the, uh, uh, neighbors at the, uh, meeting. Then, um, I am certainly, uh, a hundred percent behind this, uh, modification to the CUP. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Tohe?
Uh, no, I don't have any concerns. I, um, I would support this. As long as there's consensus, but I'm supporting, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Best?
I can make the findings, uh, I think now that, uh. Commissioner Ruggles has conquered dark skies, maybe he can apply his engineering expertise to less expensive sound walls, but, uh. Given where we are, I think we're in a good place with this project. It's been a long time and, uh. I hope that they, uh, can get to completion quickly and I support it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner Best for those comments. Vice Chair Burton?
Yeah, uh, given the rate of inflation over the last few years, I don't blame them for wanting to make this modification and I can completely support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh?
I support this, I can make the findings.
Thank you. This is Chair on Taveras. Uh, I also is, am in support of this, can make the findings, so with that, I'll accept a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I will, uh, be happy to do that. Uh, I would like to move that, uh, we approve CUP dash twenty-three dash zero zero seven. With conditions as written by staff.
I'll second that.
Is that, you know what, that was the wrong, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good, you're good. I know what you mean, but just go ahead and state it, Commissioner Ruggles.
Let's go with, uh, modification to that. I'm ahead of the game here, CUP twenty-three dash zero six one.
There we go, all right, a second, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Commissioner, uh, Wilson. For approval of CUP twenty-three zero six one with the conditions as stated, all in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is Chair on Taveras, I also vote aye. The motion passes. And the final item on our public hearing agenda, case number CUP twenty-three zero zero seven.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Well, Bob's sharing a screen. This is a conditional use permit, um, for a cell tower for wireless telecommunications facility. In the K E W, Kiababa State's West area, um, the original request was denied by the, by the commission. Um, the applicant appealed that denial to the board supervisors at the board supervisors. Uh, hearing, the applicant significantly changed, uh, their application, including the location of the tower on the site. And the array which affected the, the coverage, uh, in the propagation maps for the cell tower, so. The, um, and I'm sure Bob will cover this, but just wanted to give some preface, uh, and why this is back to you. Um, with those significant changes, the board of supervisors, uh, sent this item back to, to you as the planning and zoning commission. With, with those changes, uh, feeling that this was the appropriate body to, uh, to hear those changes to see if you can, um, make the findings for a cell tower. So Bob, thanks for letting me, uh, give that little intro and, and go ahead, please.
Yes, and thank you for that, Mr. McNeely, and because we have had a great intro, uh, Mr. Short, you can just go directly into the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Uh, this case is the Vertical Bridge Wireless Telecommunications Facility. And, uh, the app, the, in this case, property owner is Republic Properties Inc. of Scottsdale, Arizona. The applicant is Vertical Bridge of Boca Rito in Florida, representative is Sean Sanchez. Of State Forty-Eight Development Consulting, Scottsdale, Arizona. The zoning is CG ten thousand and the size of the property is a. Point two-three acre portion of a six-point-five-eight acre parcel. The request is a conditional use permit for a one-hundred-and-twenty-foot wireless telecommunications facility. With a four-foot lightning rod on the top. And, uh, I, I just want to start out with this one again, I know you saw it the last time, but we have some new commissioners and just, uh, just to kind of. Um, make sure you understand this, this, these are special considerations for a cell tower applications. The first one is that the determination of impacts from radio frequency radiation. Is entirely within the purview of the Federal Communications Commission and cannot be considered by the commission. And that means that if anyone brings up the, the issue of, uh, admissions from the tower, that is not something the commission can consider.
Mr. Short, um, let me interrupt you. Commissioner Ruggles, I don't think you know that you're not muted. There you go. Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um. Mr. Short, please go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, but, no problem, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, so in addition, also, in addition to the findings of fact, there are two additional considerations for the commission. And these are based on federal statutes, so. Uh, and I'll go over this a little bit more later, but has the applicant demonstrated there's a significant gap in coverage? That's important, and is the proposed tower the least intrusive means of addressing the coverage gap? So there are definitions for those. Um, the, a significant gap in coverage is a provider, and in this case, it's T-Mobile. Um, not other carriers because other carriers may have cell service that's better in the area, but in this case, T-Mobile is. Uh, is requesting this cell tower. Um, are they prevented from covering a significant gap in their own coverage? And least intrusive means, means, uh, requires that the provider show that the manner in which it proposes to fill. The significant gap in services is the loose, least intrusive means. Does the site and design of the tower provide the least impacts? So is this the right design for the tower? Uh, I'll go onto the vicinity map, this is in Kiababa State's West, a few miles north of Ash Fork. And this is the subject property, you can see the location of the tower. This is a large cinder pit that covers two different parcels, the tower is on this parcel in an area that's not affected by the cinder pit. And this is some, uh, background on this, uh, this tower that, uh, Mr. McNeely went over a little bit earlier. So the commission first heard this case on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three and denied the application. Uh, and that was because the commission indicated it did not meet the findings for a conditional use permit. And some of the things that were cited was that the proposed location is a disfavored site. That is adjacent to residential properties, the tower does not meet the required one-hundred-and-foot, one-hundred-and-five-foot setback, percent setback of the height of the tower. From the property line. And the proposed tower in this location would be detrimental to those properties and not consistent with the comprehensive plan. The commission also indicated that the tower does not meet federal statutes. And that the applicant has not demonstrated a significant gap in coverage exist. Based on the propagation maps provided by the applicant. And further background on this, so a- after the denial, the case was appealed to the board of supervisors and was heard on September twelfth of this year. At the board hearing, the applicant's radio frequency engineer presented details about the cell tower coverage. Not provided to the commission, um, and I think you'll see some of that tonight that they, that they will show you. So based on this new information, the board remanded the case back to the commission. Uh, the case number has stayed the same, but the applicant has been required to have a new neighborhood meeting onsite at K E W. They had it at a nearby church and the proposal has been modified, and we'll go over that in a minute as well. So this is the proposed facility, the tower provides for co-location and may include multiple antennas, including a, a microwave antenna. The facility would be located within a fifty-by-fifty enclosure surrounded by an eight-foot-high fence. The fence would contain colored slats to match the surrounding environment. And this is one of the modifications, the tower was moved forty-nine feet further away from double-A Ranch Road. And it does now meet that one-hundred-and-five percent of its height setback from the property lines. So that, that is no longer an issue. Uh, no lights would be installed on the tower and other lights would meet zoning ordinance requirements. So this is site plan showing, is a new site plan, uh, showing, uh, where the tower would be located, so now. It would be located, uh, I believe it's a hundred-and-thirty-six-point-six feet. Uh, so they would be, that would be to the tower right here, uh, that the previously it was eighty-seven feet, I believe. This is an aerial photo, uh, I, I'm sorry, is the elevation of the tower. Initially, this top part would be, uh, installed. And later, if other carriers wanted to, uh, put antennas on the tower, then this is what it would look like. This is the proposed color of the tower. And these are some, uh, actually new photo sims, they're not a lot different than the old ones. But with that movement of fifty feet further from the road, uh, it made a little bit of a difference, so this is. What you would see from about fifteen-hundred feet from the tower. You can see it right there, you can barely see it from that distance, that's more than a quarter of a mile. And this is. Fourteen-fifty feet from the tower, also very hard to see. And as you get closer, nine-hundred-and-eighty feet from the tower, this is on Fountain Drive, you can see it much clearer and there's, there's nothing blocking it in this case, but it's still, you know, pretty far away. This is moving a little closer to nine-sixty feet on Fountain Drive. This is at seven-hundred-and-thirty feet on Charm Drive, you can see it back here. Now, this is coming from the north on, uh, double-A Ranch Road, approaching the tower from the north. And, uh, this is without, and this is the tower at about four-hundred feet. Then we get to three-hundred feet, it's kind of behind this bush a little bit here. And this is how the tower would look at two-hundred feet, and this is. Directly across the road from a house that is, that is on this, uh, on the property, so Buck Drive is right near here, right down the road here. And this is how the tower would look from this existing residence. Now, I, I do want to say that, uh, propagation maps and information related to the cell tower coverage. That will be provided by the applicant, they are the experts on this, they have a lot of information for you. Uh, so I'm going to leave that up to them and not discuss that. In terms of conformance with the zoning ordinance, as, uh, some of the commission knows. There are what in the zoning ordinance, we have what are called preferred facilities, and we also have disfavored facilities. In this case, this tower is ranked four and six, and I'll show you that list in a minute. Uh, the number four as a preferred facility, that's out of ten. Uh, and that is new sites on previously disturbed areas such as cinder pits, this is an actual cinder pit. And also a new tower, one-hundred to one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet tall in commercial zone, that's number six on the list. And it's also a disfavored facility. And that is because it is very close or adjacent to residential area, it's adjacent in this case, it's right across the road. So these are, this is a list of preferred facilities, so you can see one through ten, it falls at four and at six. And note down here at nine, that would be in, you're getting into residential zones at that point. And then again, uh, disfavored facilities, the sites adjacent to are very close to residential areas. And these are the factors that led to the, uh, applicant's selection of this site. It meets the applicant's coverage of, coverage objective, and that is, uh, T-Mobile in this case. So they, they looked around the area, they wanted a centrally located area. And, uh, this one fit that, it was also, of course, in a commercial zone, although it is right next to a residential zone. Uh, the site's also close to double-A Ranch Road, that's the most important road in this area, it's a paved road. And as you probably know, it's very important to have cellphone coverage when you're on a road, an important road. It's located in a commercial zone on a disturbed site. And, um, other, if, if they were to locate it on other commercial properties in that area, it would be. Equally impactful to residential areas, residences are all around this commercial zone, so. Pretty much any place you put it, it would have an impact. Uh, the, also the surrounding AR zone ranks lower on the preferred list. That re-ranks nine, as I said before, as opposed to six for this tower, so if you were to locate it on a, on a residential property. It would rank a lot, um, lower on the list. And factors leading to the selection of this site continued, um, other areas on the property would interfere with the owner's business operation. So the owner, uh, of the property did not allow it to be located in other areas because of his business, his center pit. It, um, also supports improved emergency services. It's located very near the K W F fire, uh, station, volunteer fire station, so that provides for, uh, better services, you can, um. You can call and, and, uh, you know, the fire, the fire station. As well as people who live in the area are more able to. are more able to get emergency services out there because they have better cell service. Also, this, this area does not contain tall pine, ponderosa pine trees and was not considered appropriate for a monopine. That's an artificial pine tree, and that's a very normal cell tower in the county, as the commission knows. Okay, this, this map shows zoning and development near the proposed tower. So if you look, this is the proposed location of the tower. The red is commercial zoning, pretty much anywhere you put it, except in the middle of the pit right here, which isn't working out. And then it would still be close to residences. If you look at these, these three lots here, these were likely zone changes from commercial to residential, because this is not a normal block you would see in KW for commercial. In terms of a citizen participation for cell towers, the applicant is required to notify people within one quarter, our property owners within one quarter of a mile of the subject property. And that included 74 property owners that were invited to a meeting held at, like I said, a nearby church on October 9th of this year. More people attended the meeting and provided comments. Some of the concerns included visual impacts of the tower, impacts to the rural environment, potential for interference with fire department and other radios. And of course, there are several of the concerns, and those are all outlined in the, they were included in your packet. The applicant and staff have both received additional comments on this application, and those are attached to your staff report. And this shows that one-quarter-mile notification area, so it does go out pretty far. And you can see quite a few houses there in that area. These are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. I have addressed those in the staff report. I'll speak about that in a minute. And again, if you can, if the commission determines the application does not meet the findings and believes the application should be denied, there are additional issues to consider based on federal statutes. So first of all, the application may be denied if the applicant has not demonstrated there is a significant gap in coverage. And if the applicant has demonstrated there is a significant gap in coverage, the application may only be denied if the commission determines the proposal is not the least intrusive means of addressing the significant gap in coverage. So in this case, if the commission wants to approve the application, they can do that by making the findings in the staff report. If the commission wants to deny the application, they can do that by making the findings in commission resolution for resolution CUP 23007, and that's attached to the staff report. And of course, any of those findings can and probably should be modified by the commission as they see fit. And with that, if the commission can make the findings and determines the application meets the federal requirements, staff recommends approval with the conditions in the staff report. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Short. This is Chair Antiveris. I don't see any hands raised by commissioners. So I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening. Please state your name and address for the record. And I'm also going to ask if you have received the staff report and the conditions, and if you agree with what is contained therein. And with that, please go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Jacob Maskovich. I'm an attorney here in Arizona with law firm Brian Cave Layton Peisner. We have received the conditions proposed by staff and have no objection to those. I do have a brief presentation I'd like to make. We also have with us tonight a expert on radio frequencies, Stephen Kennedy, who I will turn some time over to so that he can address the gap in coverage. And then if I might, I would like to talk a little bit more in depth with regard to this particular location and why it truly is the the least intrusive. And I understand it's a cellphone tower, so there's always some level of intrusion, but is the least intrusive location that will satisfy the gap in coverage.
Okay, thank you. You can, you can proceed as you've outlined there.
Sorry. Yeah, I'll be as quick as I can. The applicant here is Vertical Bridge Development. Vertical Bridge is a wireless telecommunications industry. Keep in mind, it builds cellphone infrastructure, but does not do so on speculation. Does so only when its customers, such as national cellphone carriers, have a specific need in a particular area. So I want to make that clear here. This isn't a tower that's being built on speculation, but rather a particular customer approached Vertical Bridge with a need in this area and instructed it to search for locations for a tower in a particular area that would help their particular network needs. So here, T-Mobile is the customer. They have identified a gap in coverage. It's both in coverage and capacity, and there's some differences there that Mr. Kennedy can address. But keep in mind that coverage is that you have some signal. Capacity is also such that you have signal so that you can use your cellphone in the way that we've now all become accustomed to access the internet as necessary, to send pictures and such to loved ones and in other ways. This is the gap in coverage that they are attempting to solve with this particular tower. On the left, you have the current map of coverage. I think we're all now familiar with trying to read these. In the red, you might have coverage on the street.
Mr. Maskovich, this is Chair Antiveris. If I could interrupt.
Please.
If you, can you see what you are showing us on your, your share?
I believe so.
Okay, because the, you're referring, can you bring up the actual slides, like two, three, and then the, the map, the propagation maps that you're talking about? Can you bring those center screens so we can see them better?
Center screen. Okay.
Your slide is still on your, is still on your title slide. So you may want to go to slideshow, click the slideshow down at the bottom of the screen and then scroll through your presentation. You were giving your presentation thinking you were showing the propagation map slide, but, but your slide stayed on the title slide the entire time.
And that may be connectivity issues. I'm sorry, guys. Let me, um.
No, you're fine. You're fine. We'll get it. Yeah.
And let me know if, can you see my screen now?
Yeah, we can see the screen, but all it has is the title page.
Can you see this? And am I now showing?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay. Sorry about that. Let me try.
You're now on slide four. You're going to want to be able to track which slide you're on.
Okay. Can you, am I showing now propagation maps?
Yes.
Yes, you are showing the first of the two slides for the propagation maps.
Okay, perfect. This should be the low-band propagation maps, hopefully.
Yes, and you are correct with that.
Okay, great. I apologize about that. So again, these propagation maps show the need and the gap in coverage. Mr. Kennedy will talk a little bit more about the difference between low-band and high-band. But generally speaking, low-band frequencies has a greater reach, but less of a capacity to carry data, whereas high-band has a more localized reach and a, but a greater capacity to carry data. So carriers need coverage both low-band, mid-band, and high-band. And here, there's a gap in coverage both in low-band and also mid-band. And certainly, I think there's no coverage in high-band. So hopefully, you're now seeing the mid-band coverage propagation maps. And again, Mr. Kennedy will go in these in detail. In addition to the propagation maps, Mr. Kennedy did an actual drive test of the area with a scanner to see when he had data. What you'll see in the blue is as he drove up and down AA Ranch Road, the blue signifies there was marginal to no service. I can tell the commission that I myself was in this area about 45 days ago and truly just north of the proposed location with my T-Mobile phone, there's no service whatsoever. Not, not phone service or anything else.
Hey, Mr. Maskovich, this is Jess Manelli with staff. You're still on slide four, the low-band zoom slide. You might, I mean, your presentation is up. That now, now you're to slide six. So you might want to be able to track what slide you're on for your presentation.
Very good. Thank you. So I'm going to leave it in this particular view because I'm about done with mine and we'll be skipping to Mr. Kennedy. And hopefully, you're seeing now, although my slides indexes on the left, you'll be able to see this scanner data. Mr. Kennedy will talk about this in greater detail as well.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. My name is Stephen Kennedy. I'm a radio frequency consulting engineer for various wireless carriers as well as tower companies. I reside at 18756 West Luke Avenue, Litchfield Park, Arizona. So I went out and because significant gap in service is, is a thing that we needed to prove, something we needed to prove for the need of the site. I went out with a, uh-oh, screen share stopped. I went out with a, give me a second. I'll share my screen. Pick the right one. Okay, hopefully, you're seeing scanner drive test report. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So when I went out, I did this drive test. And I used a PC Tel G Flex scanner, which is a pretty much an industry standard scanner. And I scanned all carriers and all frequency bands. So I looked at Verizon, I looked at AT&amp;T, I looked at T-Mobile. And the amazing reason was to validate the models that I use to propagate as well as verify that, you know, there's a significant gap in service. So the drive test route, it's, it's might be a little hard to see. It's in a light purple. I apologize. This is the route that my engineer drove with the scanner and spent quite a few hours out here. So that gives you an idea of how, how detailed we were in our drive test. This is the current T-Mobile system, the surrounding sites. We can see the site to the south, which is 4.76 miles down in Ash Fork. Actually, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon all share the same tower. We've got T-Mobile 13.16 miles to the east or west and 16.67 miles to the east and another one about 16.39 miles to the southeast. This is T-Mobile. Yes.
Excuse me, sir. If I could interrupt for just one moment. Madam Chair, can I ask that, that the presenters go to the present mode so that the entire slide is shown? Because the detail they're trying to get us to see, that's much better. Thank you.
Sorry, sir.
Yes, and I support that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry about that. Okay, so this is the mid-band scanner data. There's two, as Mr. Maskovich talked about, there's, there's low-band frequencies. We're talking about 600 megahertz, 700 megahertz, 850 megahertz. And while they're there, they're very narrow. Lower band spectrum is a premium, and the federal government doesn't like to give up a lot of that for commercial use. The next part is the mid-band. The mid-band is where there's a wider amount of capacity or bandwidth. And when we talk about bandwidth capacity, I can equate it to a water hose. If you're out working in your area, in your front yard, and you're, you grab the water hose and you take a drink from it, you're getting 100% of the capacity of that water hose. If your neighbor comes up and wants to drink from the water hose at the same time, now you split the capacity. One of you gets 50%, the other gets 50%. And you continue down that road. More people show up, then you're, you're getting 25% of the capacity. So capacity, the more users or the more people drinking water, the less water per person there is. So we all know, and I think one of those commissioners spoke this evening about being able to pull maps up on your phone when you're out hiking and stuff. Works great. That's a wonderful thing. But there has to be service to be able to provide that. So this scanner data for mid-band is where we drove. And if you look in the upper right in the legend, green is in building or to a 95% probability, there's going to be service inside a building. That's because, you know, things like walls have impact on, on how radio frequencies propagate, things of that nature. Then if it's yellow, it's in vehicle service. And we can see the green and the, and the yellow service down to the south, closer into that site that's actually in Ash Fork. And then when we move to red, that's on-street coverage. So if you're outside with that, not in your car, not in the house, you have a 95% probability of, of receiving coverage. And then below that, the blue is neg 106. That's pretty much kind of what the FCC says. It's when it's below neg 106, the ability to serve the customers and provide service is significantly lacking. Hence, the significant gap in service. This next slide. Okay, I went ahead and zoomed in. We don't have to stay on this slide for very long. I'll try to keep people's eyes from glazing over. I kind of geek out on this stuff, so I apologize. We noticed that there's a lot of areas where we, we drove, but there's no data points. All right, that happened a lot with the mid-band. And that's because the scanner was not able to decode any control signals from the site. So there was no service. I mean, this is poor service, like almost non-existent. This is no service. So we drove these areas where we see the highlight in purple, but there's no service. We weren't able to decode a signal off the existing network. Okay, we go to the next network, Verizon, a few more sites. They're, you know, they've got a few more coverage sites, but they're, they're about the same distance away from the area. And interestingly enough, Verizon, I talked to one of the Verizon engineer over this area of the market, and they're kind of interested in, in placing a site in and around the same area that, that this proposed vertical bridge tower is. So this is a Verizon site, and then we have Verizon low-band scanner data. So we can see they've got some coverage for on, on-street in this area, but not a lot. And they're getting the same thing. They're, they have a significant gap in service as well because we are getting marginal to no service and then no ability to decode any radio signal from the transmitter. So we now have T-Mobile that has a significant gap in service. We have Verizon that has a significant gap in service even on low-band. Here's the zoom of Verizon. We can see that, you know, they've got trouble there as well and missing a lot of data points where we drove, where we weren't able to decode. This is Verizon mid-band, so a little different. We've got some, some different things happening, but same thing. We're losing a lot of coverage out here, and there's a lot of marginal to no service. Then we look at the Verizon mid-band zoom. It's kind of the same thing with what we're seeing from the T-Mobile zoom. Verizon's antennas on that tower, I think they're the top height, and T-Mobile and AT&amp;T are below them on that site down in Ash Fork. And we look at the AT&amp;T sites, once again, same site down south in Ash Fork. And then pretty much about the same area. They're slightly closer on the west side. But we look at AT&amp;T's low-band data, marginal to no service. It's, it's pretty poor. You know, especially up around the proposed. And even in the zoom, we're getting kind of the same thing. We did get a few bits of data here and though, and there, but it's still a whole lot of missing data. This was mid-band for AT&amp;T, and then this was the zoom for mid-band. So the conclusion was the drive, even though the drive-out was followed, the scanner can only create a point if it can decode the radio frequency signal from the channel transmitting. Large portion of the streets and the primary coverage optic did not show even open field coverage. And Verizon had the best coverage, but it's not enough to provide quality service. In fact, all three carriers have a significant gap in service in the area. And that has been proven from the, the drive test data, the scanner data. Let me escape out of that and switch to this one. Give me a moment so I can get to the right spot. Okay, it should say RF design analysis. Is everyone seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just want to confirm. Thank you. So coverage capacity. What are the two reasons why a carrier builds a site? Coverage and capacity. Coverage is the ability for the transceiver in the phone to talk to the transceiver in the, in the tower and able to make a connection and not drop the call and have enough signal to be able to decode the data coming across the channel. That's coverage. Capacity is the, is the ability to provide services within that coverage. So are you talking on the phone? I mean, when I, when I started in the business, all you could do was talk on a So are you talking on the phone? I mean, when I when I started in the business, all you could do was talk on the phone. Now there's a whole lot more things you can do. Are you streaming data from the phone? Are you watching YouTube? Are you uh sending and receiving email? Are you, you know, surfing the web, things of that nature? And then, you know, the the mobiles and you load everybody's, you know, always says there's an app for that. Anytime you load apps and they access servers, um, there's data being transitioned on the phone to the network and to the servers. Even though you may not be using the phone, there's still data in the background running. So that causes a a capacity concern. And I talked earlier about the water split. You know, the more users, uh, the less capacity per user there is. The objective for the new site is some capacity provide additional bandwidth for customers in the surrounding, the proposed. But really, the biggest impact for this site is is coverage. Because there is no coverage. We saw that from the scanning drive test data. There is a significant gap in service, not only for coverage, but capacity as well. And it's across all three of the major providers. Uh, nobody has great service in this area. Why is important ninety six percent of Americans own a cell phone, fifty seven percent of American homes rely exclusively on cell phones. And eighty four percent or more of nine one one emergency calls are made from wireless devices. Uh, it's a proposed site. You you guys, it's, you know, I just kind of re- regurgitate the data. Why here? Lack of coverage, significant gap in service. Uh, all three carriers have the same thing. The none of them are doing a good job. And like I said before, Verizon's interested in the area as well. Um, I don't think I don't think they're in search, but they're interested. Is there a question?
No, Mr. Kennedy, this is Chair Antiveris. It looked like you had about three screens that kind of combined there. Now we're on the screen that, well, now it says why, well, now it says.
Zoom proposal.
Site.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I was moving too fast. I apologize. Um, so this is the zoom of the proposed site. Uh, you know, it's seen as as standard stuff. Um, once again, the T-Mobile sites from the previous deck, I'll pass through this one. And now we're in T-Mobile cell mapper. So this is whenever you load things like Facebook or other things and you give permissions to to for Facebook to access your phone and load things. One of the things you load is a thin client and what that thin client does is mobiles, when they're making connections on the network. They will report back to the servers what kind of quality of connections they have. And we can see there's, you know, down around Ash Fork, you're getting green, which is really, really good connection, the the lighter greens. The darker green's not as good and the reds and oranges, you know, just plain bad. So we can see that there's uh for the subscribers, there the the mobiles that drove up through this area. Um, they're not getting a whole lot of service within this this area. Um, so this is, you know, sometimes drive test vans, a variety of things. Uh, the next one is open signal T-Mobile quality map. This is uh crowdsourced data, open source data, where anybody uh who loads the certain apps on their phones, they they report back to these servers. We can see that mobiles, actual mobiles are reporting, you know, good green connections, uh, good quality connections, good coverage down around Ash Fork. But you get up in the area where the proposed is, and I have the the data point looking at that. It's it's it's, you know, there's there's lack of ability to to communicate with T-Mobile. Mo- T-Mobile phones talking on the network. Moving along, uh, there were some questions about spectrum. So remember, uh, Mr. Maskovich talked about low band. So when we talk about low band, we're looking at what T-Mobile has down in the lower frequency bands. So they've got uh, you know, seven hundred, six hundred megahertz, another six hundred megahertz channel. And these are, so that's, you know, uh, thirty megahertz of bandwidth for for users within this spectrum. And we saw from the dry test that even within this low band spectrum that we're not getting a lot of coverage out of uh the existing site down in Ash Fork. Now, if we look at mid band spectrum, that's twenty one hundred megahertz, nineteen hundred megahertz, twenty five hundred megahertz. There's a significantly greater amount of bandwidth per carrier within this area. So there's a lot more mid band spectrum and we saw that mid band was doing a worse job than low band. So the low band spectrum only uses nine point six eight percent of the allocation is low band. And ninety point thirty two percent where we have worse coverage is the mid band. So low band has a larger coverage area, but mid band has more capacity or throughput. All right. So when we look at the RF plots, a comparison are uh, receive signal reference power. This is a typical way to look at a digital network, uh, spreads, digital spread spectrum network. So we look at the colors. If we look at the difference between what, let's say the proposed is turned on, where we have green is indoor. Yellow is in vehicle, red is on street. The green for low band shows a a pretty significant coverage area, right? That there's going to be a lot of users in the area that inside their houses, they're going to be able to make phone calls or surf the web or whatever they want to do. On the mid band, while it does have a significantly positive impact, it's smaller, right? So this is the higher bandwidth channels and this is the slightly lower bandwidth channels. So I just wanted to do a comparison to show you the difference between mid band and low band. And if we remember, remember, you know, like I can't remember off the top of my head, like around ninety percent was a mid band spectrum. So a lot of spectrum within that area. Um, next one is a a larger zoom in. This is received signal reference power, current uh current coverage low band. So this is without the proposed turned on, so it's just propagating the Ash Fork site and the surrounding neighbors. And we're seeing, you know, uh, indoor coverage up to here. We're seeing a little bit in vehicle. And we're seeing some on street. And that's once again a low band because it propagates a little better. We move to the next slide, uh, proposed coverage. We see the impact of the proposed site being turned on and propagated and the larger area that that's going to be covered with indoor coverage and coverage at all because uh from what we saw in the drive test. Then we move along to a comparison so we can kind of see a side by side. So upper left is current and I put a blue circle in to kind of highlight the area of impact. And then we have on the lower right, we have the proposed being propagated. So we can see difference, a significant difference between the coverage levels. We're going from on street, we're 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 out now, we're seeing, you know, indoor service. Or we're going from no service to in vehicle. We're we're seeing definitely positive impacts. And then we have RSRP comparison, low band zoomed. I wanted to go ahead and zoom in a little bit farther. We can kind of see where the houses are and the roads. They're they're kind of in the background. I apologize. It's hard to see with the propagation modeling up. Um, but you can see that there's a a pretty significant difference. Uh, that there's a whole lot better coverage coming off the proposed than there is off the current. Um, then we look at mid band. All right, a little less coverage, doesn't cover as far because it's it's just uh the laws of physics make it where higher frequencies don't propagate as far. That's why we can hear farther than we can see sometimes because we're the wavelength we're using it. Visible light is much higher than what it is with the sound waves. There's proposed coverage for mid band RSRP. So we're seeing some impact with some, you know, some high, high frequency or uh, yeah, higher frequency capacity. When we're going to have a whole lot larger uh bandwidth in those areas. And then we do a comparison. Okay, so here's the current. Uh, notice a significant lack in service in the area and then some some the in vehicle. Some, not a lot. And like I said, once again, this the drive test was uh, I believe a drive test uh is is the most accurate way to read what's going on in a network in an area. Uh, modeling is great, but it doesn't take, you know, uh, sometimes it misses things. So it's it's I did that. That's why I did the drive test. I wanted to prove there was a significant gap in service. Um, then we look at the mid band zoomed. Uh, we can see it, you know, definitely a significant impact within the blue circle from what's going on current and what's going on on the proposed. Uh, then we move along to AT&amp;T. Uh, we can see down in Ash Fork. So now we have AT&amp;T users reporting. Uh, we got a lot, a lot of coverage in Ash Fork, a little to the east, though, we kind of fall off. Um, and then this is the proposed site and we're not getting anything up in the north side. And then if we bring in cell mapper, there's there's not a lot of AT&amp;T subscribers being able to do much of anything up in this upper area. And they even able to connect and report. And we look at Verizon, we can see a lot more activity on Verizon because they're at the highest height on the tower down here. So we see some more activity moving along in the area, but we can see it follows, it falls down into a low neg one hundred and forty dBm, which is like those blue drive test dots and lack of dots uh from the drive test data that I showed you on the previous slides. So there's some, there's some need for Verizon. And like I said before, Verizon's looking in this area because they're seeing a need in in the area as well. Um, then we look at Verizon's uh quality map where mobiles are reporting and there's there's not a lot of reporting just because a lot of mobiles can't make the connection. And if they do, it's it's happenstance and it's not good. Um, that is the conclusion of my uh presentation. Uh, I stand for questions, but I know Mr. Mac Maskovich wants to talk, so I will stop my screen share unless anyone had wants to look at a particular page and hand it back to Mr. Maskovich. Okay, I will stop sharing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I'd like to talk now if I might about um this particular location, unless there are questions that you have or you'd like to take questions now with respect to um with respect to the 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 need in this particular area.
Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Maskovich. Why don't you go ahead uh and complete your presentation? And then I'm going to reach out to the commissioners and they will ask questions of the individual they feel would be best able to answer it. So go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you very much. Okay, the location of this particular tower, the way this works typically with carriers is they identify the need in their particular network. And here, T-Mobile provided vertical bridge with a two and a half mile search ring as an initial sort of please look for available locations here. Keep in mind, once we've identified a location within the search ring, that's just the first step. It must also then be evaluated by T-Mobile to see whether it will, the particular location will effectively um, help with the lack of service in this particular area. So hopefully what you see now is the search ring that we originally provided, vertical bridge was originally provided by T-Mobile.
Sir, you haven't, your slide hasn't incremented yet.
Are you able? Okay.
Yep, there you go.
I apologize. So this is the 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 search ring and I apologize. I'm not going to put this in slideshow view. So I apologize about that. I can do so if you need to, but it seems to be hanging up. Um, this is the search ring that was provided. The proposed location is right here in the middle of the ring. Now, keep in mind with respect to T-Mobile, we can't put a tower in vertical bridge, can't put a tower wherever it wants. It both has to meet a network need, but also the landowner has to be cooperative and they have to be willing. Here, the the proposed site is in the middle of the ring, which is really ideal from a network standpoint because it'll serve the greatest potential users. Um, also, the proposed site is is commercial here in the middle. And it is commercial next to commercial parcels on at least three sides to the south and to the east. The aerial location, which you already saw, so I'll move through that. Again, and as was discussed by Mr. Short, the proposed site is a preferred location under the zoning code. In fact, there's only the only more favored locations under the zoning ordinance are where the it would be a co-location on an existing verticality some uh somewhere or where um this the tower could be fully camouflaged. None of those particular instances or locations are available in this area. There is not another tower. There are not, there is not another verticality of this sort in the area where we could co-locate or locate the antenna, nor can we completely conceal it in any fashion. And so here we're at number four, new sites on previously disturbed areas such as cinder pits. This particular parcel is an active cinder pit. That's what it's used as. That's why vertical bridge really keyed in on this location because of its commercial use and because it was a disturbed site under your ordinance, it is the most preferred location in the site on this list. It's number four. Um, it's also qualifies as number six again because it's the tower between a hundred and a hundred and seventy five feet on general commercial property. There's really not a better location within the search ring for to locate this tower. The closest other commercially zone property is to the south, also along double A Ranch Road. Those parcels are smaller in size and actually closer to residential properties. Um, definitively not as good as this one. And I do understand and I I respect all of the residents. It is a cell phone tower. It is a hundred and twenty foot tower. Um, we talk about least intrusive because there's always going to be some level of intrusion with a cell phone tower. Everyone loves this technology, but unfortunately with the technology comes the need for these towers. In this particular area, we're not saying there's no intrusion, but truly there, this is the least intrusive intrusive location that this tower could be placed in this area to still fulfill the gap in coverage that exists. The setbacks, we've talked about that. Uh, Mr. Short addressed that. To be clear, and I think he mentioned and it's slightly inaccurate, that we changed the location of the tower when we were before the border supervisors. That actually happened afterwards. We made a modification as somewhat of an effort, the best we could, to push the tower back so that hopefully residents would be less affected by its location, but it now meets the setback requirements of the zoning code. Um, again, location, a hundred and thirty six feet, six inches from the property line. It's four hundred feet from the nearest residence. The nearest residence is to the south and the west. Here are the aerials. You've already seen these, so I'm going to go quickly. That's from a directly across the street. Notably, there are power lines in the area. The power line, power lines end along double A Ranch Road right here. Here's your findings and I want to walk through them if I can, um, just one by one. The proposed location is in accord with the objectives of the zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinance allows for wireless communication facilities on property zones CG ten thousand. As we've talked about, a disturbed site like this one is actually one of the preferred locations. The conditional use complies with the provisions of the zoning ordinance. The tower meets the height and setback and other requirements of section three point nine of the ordinance. And then there's a question of whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does seek to facilitate the expansion of wireless communication systems. Your comprehensive plan here in Coconino County recognizes the need for wireless communications and broadband services and probably the most efficient way to meet internet services in rural communities is indeed wireless communications. And so it does and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As Mr. Short discussed, and I'll just discuss, mention it carefully and then quickly. But in addition to the four findings of fact, if you can make those four findings of fact pursuant to the ordinance code, the conditional use permit should be approved. But even if you couldn't, federal law would require approval if there was a significant gap in coverage, which is, I think, exactly what Mr. Kennedy established. And you found that this particular location was the least intrusive means to cover the significant back gap. That doesn't mean there's no intrusion. We recognize that. But is there a better location for this that would be less intrusive within this particular area that would still satisfy the gap in coverage? That's the question. Based on the area that we looked at, this particular location, its current use as a cinder pit. The fact that it's adjacent to commercial properties on at least two sides um, and the size of the parcel, it is the best and least intrusive location for this particular tower. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or go back over any of the other slides that you might need additional information on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maskovich. At this time, uh, this is Chair Antiveris. I'm going to reach out and ask if any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Kennedy or Mr. Maskovich at this time. Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions. First, the last time we saw this presentation, the tower was configured with antennas that provided additional service to the south and completely ignored the north. And so the improvement, as best we could tell from what was presented, um, appear to be completely to the south and nothing to the north. Has that changed with this proposal?
Yeah, yes, sir. This uh, when I went back and spoke with the T-Mobile RF engineer, we we redid some uh, we reviewed the area and I I spoke about the need for the customers north of the proposed and how he had all three sectors kind of facing south, like southeast, south and southwest. And I I I worked with him to rotate the sectors around and redo some redesign and make it more of a three hundred and sixty and make it more of a 360-degree coverage instead of everything facing south because of the amount of users up in the northern part of the area. So there is, there's been some design changes to the antenna system to allow for better coverage at a at a 360 view around the site.
Okay, and then my second question is, and I asked this question the last time this was presented, when I go to T-Mobile's coverage map, it shows that the area that you're talking about and that you did all this testing in is either 4G, 5G, or 5G Ultra.
Okay.
And it 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 seems inconsistent that they would publish a map on their national website showing amazing 5G coverage, yet your testing shows just the opposite.
Yes, sir. You've ventured into an area I always get very excited about, which is, you know, it's like everybody, everything on the internet's not, is always true. So when they run, when they run propagation on these sites and they show their existing coverage, they're doing it to levels that that are trying to match the FCC's lowest coverage standard, which is NEG 106 for digital spread spectrum networks for broadband coverage. And I've I've seen this on all three of them. There's things missing or things that are overstated a little too positively that say, oh, there's good service, but there's maybe not quite as good. So that's why I went out and I did the drive test with this scanning drive test equipment because, like I said before, that's the most reliable way to look and see exactly what's going out there for every frequency band for every carrier.
Mr. Kennedy, this is Chair Antiveris. I'm going to interrupt the meeting quickly. At the beginning of the meeting, when I was reading the meeting rules, I very clearly stated that the chat function was not for discussion. There's only one purpose for it, and that is to let staff know if you're having some kind of a connectivity issue, something like that. Now, I have seen comments coming across and that is not acceptable. Thank you for the apology, but I just want to get ahead and keep this meeting in order. So thank you for all that and thank you for every, and thank you to everyone for abiding by these conditions. Mr. Kennedy, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Wilson, did did this answer your question, sir, or?
I think it did. And to follow on to that, then, the DB levels that you were talking about for your signal testing, your actual drive testing.
Yes, sir.
Tell me what level I need to successfully have a simple voice call.
And that that depends on where you are. Are you inside? Are you in a vehicle or are you outside?
How about give me all three then?
Okay, so if 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 we go back and and you look at within the package and you look at the propagation maps, the green is to a 95% probability you will have coverage indoors inside the building. If you're seeing yellow, it's neg, that's at neg 85 dBm RSRP. Neg 95 dBm RSRP is in vehicle. So there's a, to a 95% probability, you will have coverage in your vehicle if there is neg 95 dBm coverage. And then open field, you know, you're out on the golf course, you're out walking, walking down the road on the sidewalk, whatever. That's neg 106 dBm RSRP. And these these values I'm giving you match up a lot with what the FCC utilizes to prove broadband coverage for carriers.
And but more specifically, what I'm asking is what level of of coverage do I need to make a simple voice call as opposed to upload or download movies?
Okay, so so we 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 kind of come back into the same situation is now we're in a digital broadband network. It's not like it was in the late 80s when it was analog networks and, you know, everybody had their own channel. Now everybody's on the same spread spectrum channel. So you still have to have that RF level of service to provide a voice call. So if you're outside and you've got neg 106, you can make a voice call and you can surf the web. It's, you know, may maybe not going to be as fast as you'd like, but it's there. Inside a vehicle, if you've got neg 95, you're going to have a voice call and then you're going to have a little better on on your throughput to get to get to the higher bandwidth. So it's it's digital network. It's a one or a zero. It's it's you got the signal or you don't. There's no misnomer in between. So the RF levels I'm giving you are for voice or for data or for anything on these networks.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm looking, Mr. Kennedy, I'm looking to see if any of the other commissioners have questions for you. And I am not seeing any hands raised. So with that, I am going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, would you please raise your hand? I will call on you and then we, Mr. McNeely, would you please help me time three minutes for each speaker, please?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask again, is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? Okay, seeing no hands raised. I'm going to close it to the public and I'm going to open it at commission discussion. Commissioner Ruggles, would you please start the discussion?
I guess I can. There is, there is no public comment at this point.
That, Chair Ruggles, I I I'm a surprised issue and that was why I reached out two times. And even still, I see no hands raised and no unmuted. And so therefore, we're going to move forward.
Okay, no problem there. I went over everything that was in the packet forwarded to us. Looked at it very thoroughly. And I have no problem determining based on the data that is in the packet and what is presented this evening that there is a significant gap in coverage. One of the other things I did that looking at the data available from our county GIS services, how built up is the area up to the north and over to the west? And there are a significant number of people who have built in that area. And they have absolutely no service whatsoever. I visited the site prior to the previous hearing with staff and I can confirm that what kind of coverage you get with Verizon out there. It's one of those things where it was literally no coverage. The phone was giving me indications every time I'd move of being in or out a an area where I got reception. So I know what that's like firsthand experience. Mr. Kennedy's done an excellent job of presenting the the data that he is, he works with on a regular basis. And I understand this extremely well. Now, the other thing is, in terms of the least intrusive site, of course, this is again a matter of how we define intrusion. And it appears to me that intrusion here is primarily visual. And in terms of choosing a site, it is exactly as it has been presented. I looked at the zoning map to see what other areas were available that were commercially zoned. And that was the property, well, it's several parcels to the south, about three quarters of a mile south and somewhat southeast. I am familiar with that property also. And given that, I don't think that based on what has been presented that we would get much of an improvement in coverage if that site were to be used. It is smaller. It is surrounded more closely by residential property than the requested site. One other thing that really hasn't been addressed, I went back to 2016 to the, matter of fact, it was CUP 16 dash 022. And that was a site in Oak Creek Canyon and that took significant amounts of our time at the commission and also staff time. One of the things that was addressed at that in terms of the effective prohibition of service, there were suggestions then about location in the national forest on the east side of Oak Creek Canyon. The problem with that was the permitting process that would be necessary to utilize something in the national forest. Secondly, the problem was one of getting power to operate the site. And all of that added up to probably more than a couple of years of process in the permitting. And that, in effect, based on the discussions we had at the time at the commission, was effectively a prohibition of service. So the idea of locating it somewhere else where there's no power or there would have to be new roads is basically, in my opinion, a prohibition of service and would leave us open to action in court about doing something like that. Now, beyond that, as far as intrusiveness, no matter where cell tower is located in an area like this, it's going to be visible. So I think I have to go along with the presentation by the attorney representing the applicant that intrusiveness is a relative thing. There is no new infrastructure needed to support it other than simply a small road onto the site where the tower would be located. There is electrical power there. There is a county maintained road that's AA Ranch Road. And I think in terms of intrusiveness, no matter where you put it, it's going to be intrusive to one degree or the other, primarily visual. And at that, I will leave it for the rest of the commission to look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Tohe.
Good evening again. I do not have any comments at this point. I do support the presentation and and also make the findings. I think that is appropriate to say. Thank you.
Whoops, there we go. Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the presentation that we saw this evening that showed the kind of AB comparison of pre and post tower and the change in service, something that we weren't able to determine really from the last presentation. In addition to apparently the reoriented antenna arrays on the pole to me have completely changed the the ability to make these findings, and I believe that I can.
Thank you. Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on what we've heard tonight, unless other commissioners or staff have a different point of view, it looks like we have a gap. This tower will fill it. We have searched for alternate sites. There are none that are better, and that means that we are more or less obligated to approve. And so I can make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Burton.
Well, this presentation was much more clearly laid out and concise than the last one we saw. And the fact that we now have more of a 360-degree coverage because of reorientation, I have no problem making the findings with this based on the requirement that we do so.
Okay, Commissioner Walsh.
I appreciated the presentation. This is my first exposure to this and I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. This is Chair Antiveris. Mr. Short, would you please pull up the cell tower application evaluation flow chart, please?
Madam Chair, give me one second. I think it's back in the files.
Okay, no, you're fine. You're fine. I just want to lay out how my my decision and how it was made.
Oh, there you go. Thanks.
Okay.
There we go. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And we all can see it. Members of the public can see it. There is a flow chart that we must follow when making this decision. The first question that we are asked is, does the proposed cell tower meet local jurisdictions zoning requirements? I think I'm differing from my fellow commissioners in my decision tonight because I would not be able to approve the conditional use permit based on I cannot make finding number D, which states that the proposed conditional use is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives and policies of the general plan or specific plan for the area. Specifically, the location is disfavored because it is right across the street from a residential area. That's the first reason. And the second reason is that in our comprehensive plan, Community Character Policy 6, I do not find this compatible and complementary with surrounding neighborhoods. So I would answer no to that question. However, I, that's not where, that's not how this ends. So the next question is, does the proposed cell tower cover a significant gap in personal wire service? The answer is yes. And the next question is, is the proposed cell tower the least intrusive means to cover the significant gap? The answer is yes. And so therefore, I I feel I have no choice but to approve this application as it is. And so I will do it, but I just wanted to lay out how I came to the decision tonight, just for the record. I I tell you, I do it'd be tough. I'm gonna, I'm not going to lie, and I do believe that Mr. Maska-Vich hit on this. It's tough having a cell tower put right across the street from you. But there is no other way to evaluate the case this evening except to approve it. And so with that, I will be voting to approve, but I did want my 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 decision laid out there. So with that, I will take a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I'll go ahead with this. I moved for approval of CUP 23 dash 007, which conditions as written by staff. And I got the right CUP number this time, too. Thank you.
You did, Commissioner Ruggles. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Walsh, I second that.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson, I'm going to, Commissioner Walsh, I'm going to let her second that. So I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Walsh for approval of CUP 23007. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye, and I forgot to add a condition that I wanted to block any microwave dishes on the tower, but aye.
Okay. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is by, this is Chair- This is by, this is Chair Antiveris, and I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. And the final item on our agenda this evening is call to public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, my clock shows nine twenty-six PM, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Chair Antiveris.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep. Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy New Year. We'll see you in twenty twenty-four.
Let's hope so. Thank you.
Bright, early, bright, early on the third, early in the month. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.